And we are live.
Fantastic. Okay, more than everybody and especially to you and and to and to you Stephen that we can see on the screen there. Look, just in terms of setting the scene for today, it's really appropriate that we commence with our karakia. And once we've had our karakia, we'll go through some introductions and set some some parameters so we all understand where we're heading and then we can get into the proceedings. So with your indulgence, I'll call on Commissioner Bigham for our introduction in our karakia.
Tēnā koi Brendan, tēnā tātā, tēnā kūrua, ngā kōmili hana o toranga, anu te mahiki a kūrua i tēnā iata. Kua tātato karakia whakatima ta, our opening karakia is our karakia that the commission loves to start with all our hoi and all our hearings as whakataka te ho, please feel free to join us if you if you want to. Whakataka te ho ki te uru, whakataka te ho ki te tonga, kiamaa kina kina ki uta, kiamaa tara tara ki tai. Kia hei ake ana te atākura, he teo, he huka, he hoho, tihai, mōri ora. And that karakia refers to the the winds, the cleansing winds and the new dawns and the new thoughts and the new aspirations that come upon us all as we enter into our mahi today. Kia ora tato katoa.
Kia ora Banita. So I thought that might be useful, given that this is a unique space in democracy and in local government, actually, Anne and Stephen. So to give that sense that we appreciate that there is a new environment, this is the first time for the commission to be an environment, for the local government commission to be in an environment where we are considering the principles, the purest principles of democracy being established by commissioners of a local authority. It's 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 a really, really intriguing and in fact quite special time when we really think about it. I spoke earlier to the team and to avoid confusion for the community those are observing. Commissioners talking to commissioners can create elements of confusion. So we thought that on this occasion, we all should be on first name terms. I have been, you know, pretty, pretty determined to make sure that the local government commission, it's got a really, really important role to play in the end. So those titles for the commissioners I've used quite strongly, but today, I think to avoid any confusion, we'll abandon them. But no doubt through the course of the day, we might fall back into our old ways, but I don't think anybody would be too concerned. So just to give you a sense on the screen, and you guys have been around a while, so you've got a reasonable sense, I think. But I will ask both Sue and Janie just to introduce themselves, so you've got a bit of a sense of background from the commissioners' perspectives, Banita and myself, and then we'll go through and just run through the commission team. So Sue and then Janie.
Kia ora katoa, toranga team. I'm Sue Piper. I've got 25 years plus plus years in various aspects of local government, including elected member as an elected member at Wellington, at Wellington. Good to be with you. The only other thing I should mention is that if you know anybody in toranga that looks like me, it'll be a cousin. I have several cousins there. Peter did never like to go into family reunions because he was always scared he'd leave with the wrong one.
Atu ma tē, I'm Janie Inear and many of you know me. And it's wonderful to be with you today. Pity we're not actually there in person. That would have been so much nicer. But technology is a wonderful thing and looking forward to working through the process with you today. I've had 18 years in local government, nine of those as mayor of the Timur district and nine as a councillor and then I've been lucky enough to have seven on the local government commission. So thank you.
Kia ora no tato, ko Banita bigam tu kuingoa, ahe uriaho no taranaki manga, no ngārua hini metiatiawa, ke te mahiki a katoa. So I'm Banita. I'm firmly ensconced here under my mountain in Taranaki. Spent a wonderful 12 months working over there in toranga about 20 years ago, so the place is a bit bigger than I remember. I am a former three-term councillor at South Taranaki District Council and current community board member there. Kia ora.
Kia ora Banita. And I'm Brendan Duffy, former mayor of the Hora Fenua for 12 years and for the nine years on the local authorities and a bit of time on national council and a few other roles around the place at the moment. So you've got a sense that the local government commissioners have had some experience and a bit of an understanding around this really, really important topic. Also on the team from the commission offices, you can see EJ Ruth from there, Donald Rezaboss and the CEO Penny Langley. So that's our team and really keen to pass over to you, to you and your team for introductions and then Anne, just go, we'll just get straight into it. Probably the only other observation I'd make, I am conscious we've got a number of appellants and we're going to try and stick reasonably tight to time. So we really are looking for summary. We've obviously read everything to do our best to be a little bit courteous to those presenters as well today. So pass over to you.
Kia ora. Kia ora tato. Brendan, thank you very much and thanks for the opportunity to present our final proposal for the representation arrangements for toranga city councils. Thank you for getting rid of the titles. I think you're absolutely right. It would be quite confusing if we were all addressing one another as commissioner. And we take that, those of you who know toranga, we're a bit informal here. It's a pity you're not here because it's a fantastic day as usual in the Bay of Plenty. So of course, I'm Anne Tolly and I chair the commission. I have with me my fellow commissioner Stephen Selwood. I have the chief executive Marty Greenfield, who's to my right, he's just out of camera, he's a bit shy.
Yeah, we know her, we know that about him.
And also we have Coral, who's our head of democracy and and she's she's also shy and not visible. And we have Robin, who's running running the technology for us. So would you like me to get straight into it? So Stephen and I will be addressing you today together and hopefully we can answer all of your questions and we have some help if we can't. I'm going to make some introductory comments to start with about the commission and our role before Stephen and I take you through our final proposal so that you can have a full understanding of our reasons for the proposal. But toranga is New Zealand's fastest growing city, but it has significant infrastructure and community facility deficits largely as a result of the failure of successive councils to commit to the level of investment that's required to address and manage that rampant growth. I was aware to some degree of the dysfunction affecting toranga's elected members. So when Minister Mahuta asked me if I would be prepared to chair this commission that she was planning to appoint to take over the council's governance functions, I didn't actually have to think about it too much. I've had 15 years as the East Coast MP supporting the economic development of the eastern bay and all of that required a vibrant and functioning toranga city. So you see there a photo of the four commissioners. Many people have commented on the ministers, the astuteness of the ministers' appointments. Stephen Selwood was me today as an acknowledged expert in infrastructure. We have two local people with significant planning experience and expertise. Bill Wasley, who was the independent chair of the sub-regional smart growth leadership group and Shad Rolleston, who brings strong Iwi ties and Te Aonari knowledge to the role. And myself, as a former MP and cabinet minister, with more than 30 years governance experience in local and central government to chair the commission. So we were appointed on the 9th of February 2021 and the key tasks set out for the commission and our terms of reference are up there for you. Look, I won't read them through. They're they're pretty clear, but it was to develop that 10-year plan, create that spirit of partnership with Tonga de Fenua and the community and and I think most importantly, work to restore trust and confidence in both of those are with the council.
And is somebody, sorry, is somebody flicking the screen up so we can see the rest of those slides? Is somebody, because we've still got.
Are you not, are you not seeing those slides?
We've got the, all I've got on the screen is the big, the big, the first slide. The small ones are on the left-hand side, but they're too small to read.
And and we've got all the Microsoft stuff around it, so it's, you know.
Oh, right. Let's just change. Let's just change that. Has it moved on?
That's getting better.
So that's our key tasks.
Yep. You've still got all the Microsoft stuff around there. It's okay though. It's okay. It's okay.
All right, we'll see what went down. Technology is wonderful when it works.
Well, look, I was going to say, and I should have at the start, you know, as we've done this work around the country, everybody's had their challenges, but one way or the other, we've made it work and this is no different. We get there. So I mean, we're all over the country at the moment, all different little cubby holes, but we're making it work.
So so why don't I just.
Keep rolling.
Getting our technical man back in, but why don't I just take you, continue taking you through it and we'll let the technicians work on it. So so I'll read through those key tasks because it might, it's too small. So the first one was to develop a robust 21, 20, 2021, 20, well, the 10-year long-term plan to address though that historic underinvestment and to deal with the funding challenges platform for the future. And that is about creating a livable, a livable city of the future. And if I just talk briefly, what we found was quite, quite a lot of community resentment about growth and the feeling that they were paying for growth. Creating a spirit of partnership with Tonga de Fenua and the community and work to restore that trust and confidence from both of those sectors in in the council and the work that it was doing. To actively engage with the community that was that was seriously lacking. To facilitate the transition back to democratic representation, which is part of what we're here to talk to you today about. And then to collaborate effectively with the regional partners to implement solutions which address the western Bay of Plenty's fast growth issues. So before we could do any of that, we had to learn the ropes. After all, taranga city is a highly complex $4 billion plus business. And to use that analogy, you can't just put a new board of directors in place and expect them to immediately make good decisions. So as you know, there's a lot of reading in local government anyway, but we had to absorb all of that. So hours and hours of executive briefings and more hours of background reading, we started to see that whole picture. And at the same time, we were starting the long process of engaging with councils, key community stakeholders, Iwi, business organisations and social service providers amongst many others, and learning about cities' issues and priorities from their perspectives. We made a decision to delay the long-term plan's implementation by a month with the government's permission. And this was quite a sensible move as it was absolutely necessary if we were to meet our terms of reference requirements. And the key part of that was the communication and working with the community. So April, May and June of 2021, we're a blur of community meetings, pop-up information sessions and face-to-face conversations involving thousands of people. Along the way, we've got some pretty clear messages about dealing with the city's infrastructure issues and the need for fit-for-purpose community amenities. And we heard from communities who felt that they'd simply been ignored by previous representation arrangements and also by the operations of the council. So this was great preparation for us when we came to consider the representation review in May and June of 2021 as we felt we had met with, heard from and understood many of the communities that make up this great city. The decision to establish a Maori ward was made by the previous council and we confirmed that decision in April of 2021. So we set up a, we dissolved the committee structures that the council had in place because there's only the four of us. But we set up a strategy, finance and risk committee with five external representatives on it. Three Tonga de Fenua representatives, Dr Wayne Bealby, Rohario Murray, Tapio Kawai, the chairperson of Tarangapu Manofenua or Toronga Moana, Matere Duncan, and a finance and risk expert who's been involved in other representation reviews around the country, is well known to to all of you, I'm Shaw Bruce Robertson. And and together we considered the representation arrangements. At our first meeting, we had three models which broadly represented the representation arrangements that were available to us and were designed to stimulate discussion. A fully at-large model that was originally presented as an option was not available to us and we heard from Donald from the local government commission and our strategy, finance and risk committee on the 28th of June 2021 on the reasons why. We needed, as explained, to have a model with at least five ward councillors to qualify for that one Maori ward councillor. So this narrowed down our options to either awards-only model, either single or multi-member wards or a mixed model with wards and at-large councillors. The committee we recommended, we go out for pre-engagement. Are you seeing those slides now? Yes, good. So the committee recommended we go out for pre-engagement to, with the community with four options that broadly set out the representation options that were available to us and ask the community to select their preference. There were also specific questions such as the number of councillors preferred and there was room for comments, other options and to express their views on whether community boards should be established. So the pre-engagement, we timed so that it didn't clash with the LTP because we knew at the time there was that risk that the extensive engagement that we were undertaking around the LTP may result in a lower level of interest in the review process and the low turnout for the public meetings that we had on the representation did reflect this. We still wanted to hear from as many people as possible and the engagement was designed to be as broad and inclusive as we could possibly get it. Links to further information were available on the website for those who like to get into the detail. And we particularly asked staff, we particularly wanted to hear from Iwi, from the business community and from young people. The business community used this opportunity then to actively lobby their members and the public and created a video that was aimed at the Minister of Local Government, calling the minister to keep the commission in place beyond October 2022, which wasn't quite what we had in mind. So consequently, we received a number of responses along those lines in the survey. As well as written communication to Iwi and hapu organisations, staff held in-person briefings with Tarangapu Manofenua or Toronga Moana members and an open information evening was held at Hari Ni Malā. Now, that Tarangapu is actually a representative group of all the Iwi and hapu here in Toronga Moana. And a very effective committee it is. So we were less successful in targeting young people. Whilst we had 825 responses, we recognised that the survey respondents were not representative of the city population and we took that into account when making our decisions. The initial proposal that we adopted for public consultation was based on those survey results plus the community feedback we heard during the long-term plan and the other factors and other factors which were addressed below. The council received 141 formal submissions on its initial proposal. The number of submitters in favour and against this initial proposal was relatively even. So we considered all the submissions and heard from 14 of the submitters before adopting a final proposal on the 8th of November 2021. We did make boundary amendments in response to submissions to Maua Mount Mamanui and the Arataki wards and between the Arataki and the Papamoa wards. We amended award name. Matau ward was renamed Matau Oru Moutai ward and we were gifted Te Awanui as the name for the Maori ward. It is the original name for the, for the Taoranga Harbour. The final proposal is based on the principle of geographic representation of communities of interest. It increases the number of general wards from three to eight and includes a Maori ward for the first time. This arrangement allows the ward councillors to effectively represent the views of people in their electoral area. The general wards are smaller in geographic size and population than the current three general wards. Te Awanui, the Maori ward, is citywide and represents Maori community interests. The proposal recognises that the concept of community of interest relates to the fundamental role of local government as community government. It recognises that there are distinct communities within the toranga community. If you look at the layout, you can see there are quite widespread communities and it's important that they have representation around the council table. We heard from communities during the LTP engagement who felt they'd been ignored by previous councils. There was a strong message coming from some suburbs, such as Welcome Bay, that the community felt ignored and forgotten by the previous representation. Historic failure to ensure that representation from across the city has led to this community frustration. More geographic representation of these communities is a core principle that we have sought to achieve in the representation structure. We've grouped together communities that we believe share communalities of interest. And we've had some pinch points, as you do, around boundaries to achieve compliance and we will discuss those pinch points in more detail. We see this as a more easily understood system as voters get to vote for one councillor and an ear. The ward councillor will have a direct relationship with their constituents and vice versa. And it encourages greater collaboration between councillors and community groups. Now hand over to Stephen so that you get a variety of voices.
Thanks, Anne. For the first time, the council will have one Maori councillor elected citywide by those on the Maori electoral roll. It was important that the representation system was as equitable as possible for Maori voters as for general voters. The single-member ward model will see both Maori and general electors vote for one councillor plus the mayor. One of the models we adopted for pre-engagement, which was option two, provided for general voters to elect the majority of councillors. And while that was seen as an advantage for general voters, it was seen as the most inequitable model for representation for Maori. Indeed, Tarangapu Manofenua or Taronga Moana members did not support option two as as they saw it to be extremely inequitable for voters on the Maori roll. Option two was put forward as an at-large kind of approach. It was the most popular option in the pre-engagement survey, the 33% of respondents chose option two. And many submitters we heard from believed that it should have been chosen by the council for this reason. However, we took into account the demographics of the survey respondents who were overwhelmingly male, European, aged over 65 and lived in Papamoa. We didn't consider the survey results necessarily provided us with a true representative reflection of the city residents. Indeed, we found it deeply uncomfortable to choose option two as it doesn't fit with our commitment to act in a manner that upholds the principles of Te Ateriti o Watangi. As we have stated, one of our key tasks is to create a spirit of partnership between Tonga de Fenua and to work to restore trust and confidence in the council. And we felt that choosing this option would undermine the very good progress that we had made in this area. Very early on, staff did an exercise on developing ward boundaries based on Iwi hapu boundaries. What we took from this exercise was the importance that at the very least, we needed to make sure that ward boundaries were not significantly out of step and definitely not offensive and at best were as consistent as possible with Iwi hapu boundaries. We considered a mixed model arrangement, which was option one in the pre-engagement survey, based largely on the current representation arrangements, with general ward councillors elected from three wards and some councillors elected at large. This model has been in place since 2010 and was a status quo option. A mixed arrangement creates two different categories of councillor and with this a perceived power imbalance between those elected at large and those elected by geographic wards. It also doesn't provide for more representation of smaller communities of interest. It would deal with some of our pinch points around ward boundaries. Taking all of those factors into consideration, we concluded that single-member ward, that a single-member ward model was preferable to a mixed-member ward model as it enables all councillors to have the same status and we get greater coverage of smaller geographic communities around the council table, which as Anne has outlined, we knew was a key concern of many communities across the city from our consultation across the communities. We heard from submitters who wished to vote for as many councillors as possible and articulated the benefits of a mixed model arrangement. And we listened and we felt that we understood those benefits. We also understand that as electors, they have been able to vote for the majority of councillors, six out of 10 since 2010 and feel this loss keenly. In response to those submitted, we reiterate that we believe geographic representation by single-member councillors is the best fit for Taoranga City at this time in its history, when it will be returning to democracy. We also note that there is no requirement in the Local Electoral Act 2021 to put in place arrangements where people vote for the maximum number of councillors. We acknowledge that an at-large model would be well-suited to taranga, given the small geographical size of the city with a mainly urban population. And we're sympathetic to the views of appellants and objectors who see that communities of interest are spread across the city rather than geographically based and that decisions of councils impact on people citywide. However, an at-large only model was not available to the council in this fall. As previously discussed, option two achieves that and was put forward as an option to stimulate an at-large model but was ultimately discounted for several reasons. Firstly, because of the feeling from communities that they need a representative voice. We also had the feedback from Tarangapu and the Manofenua representatives on the Strategy, Finance and Risk Committee that they saw this approach as inequitable. And we were supported by the views of the, and the issue was supported by the views of the review and observer team. The other model, option three, that went out for pre-engagement, had 12 councillors from seven wards. This was the least popular in the survey with only seven and a half percent of respondents choosing this option. This option had less geographic representation than the single-member ward model. It also meant that three ward electors would be voting for two to three candidates and four wards electors would be voting for one candidate, which was also seen as inequitable. The final proposal is intended to support a culture of collective responsibility and to collaborate. and a collaborative environment of elected members. All councillors are collectively responsible for making decisions in the interests of the whole community. This arrangement will facilitate wider representation from across the city, coming together to make decisions while ensuring accountability across the whole city. Appellants and objectors state that at-large councillors would, in their opinion, have made a more strategic approach in citywide view than councillors elected from wards. However, we reject this opinion and believe that ward councillors are just as capable of taking a strategic approach as at-large councillors. There is a perception that ward councillors can be captured by ward interests. And we do acknowledge that this can be a reality and councillors must always balance the role of effective representation of constituents versus getting captured and blinkered by elements within a ward to the detriment of other constituents or indeed to the detriment of the citywide approach. As we have heard during the LTP consultation, not having effective representation of particular communities can make them feel invisible to decision makers. All ward councillors will need to rally the support of their colleagues on any issues they wish to pursue, which in turn promotes collective responsibility. There was some concern raised that constituents would only be able to talk to their councillor. However, there is nothing to stop constituents talking to any councillor at any time on any issue or the mayor. Indeed, members of parliament in New Zealand are elected by local constituents but are able to represent the interests of the country. It's the way New Zealand is run. We also recognise that at-large councillors are equally capable of being captured by interest groups and must also guard against this potential risk of being seen as a single interest councillor. On the issue of mayoral leadership, with the mayor being elected at large by all voters across the city, the successful candidate will have the strongest mandate to fill the leadership role appropriate to a mayor. We acknowledge the argument of the appellants and objectors that mayoral leadership is crucial in any representation arrangement, and we agree with this. The point we are making with this arrangement in having the mayor as the only member elected by all voters is to elevate the mana of the role and make it more explicit. Removing at-large councillors may or may not remove the challenge to the mayor's leadership. However, we do think it will be less likely that a ward councillor standing for the majority will challenge the mayor after the election. We do see this arrangement as giving the mayor at least a fighting chance from the outset. We made a deliberate decision to have an even number of elected members, which will mean that the mayoral casting vote can be utilised to make a final decision where this is needed. It also allows the mayor to provide oversight and aim to achieve consensus for the majority of decisions. The need for a new model of representation was clearly highlighted by the Crown Appointed Review and the Review Team in November twenty twenty, consisting of Peter Winder, Linda Tuia Smith, and Basil Morrison. The team highlighted that they considered some of the issues and behaviours that the council was dealing with at the time had degenerated in the city's representation arrangements. The team's view was that the contest for the mayoralty did not end with the election and that the mix of at-large and ward councillors may have been a contributing factor to the dysfunctional governance being experienced. The team also questioned whether the communities of interest were coherently represented. One of the considerations for the commission has been the insight provided by Peter Winder as chairperson of the Review and Observer team. His recommendation to us was that council consider all councillors, except the Maori councillor, being elected from a larger number of small wards with boundaries that reflect communities of interest. That is, no at-large councillors. Mr. Winder's recommendation was based on his opinion that this approach would create a clear and certain mandate for the public and provide a better than even chance of delivering a functional council than the one the team observed. This was one of the considerations before us and we did give it due weight. We did give due weight to Mr. Winder and the review team's opinion and recommendations. After all, they had interviewed, studied and observed the previous council up close and personal, and we respected the insight that this had provided. We had also met with all but two of the former councillors, some who confirmed this view. However, we want to stress that this was by no means the main reason for choosing a single ward model. It was one of many considerations. Staff had provided options to the committee for twelve councillors, being an additional councillor for the Maori ward and a further councillor for either a general ward or an at-large councillor to stimulate that debate. The committee had decided to go out with two options, one and two with ten councillors, as these could be easily scaled up, and two options, three and four, with twelve councillors. The survey results had shown an overwhelming preference for ten or less councillors. Based on this feedback, we considered two options for single member wards that reduced the number of councillors. These related to option four, single member wards that went out for pre-engagement with twelve councillors. Eleven councillors from eleven wards and one from a Maori ward. Nineteen and a half percent of survey respondents had chosen option four. Option four A with nine councillors was chosen as the initial proposal. Option four B with ten councillors was non-compliant. We will discuss this option more when we talk about the Greta community. The optimal number for good governance is debatable. As a smaller governance body, we believe we have provided a role model for good governance with less numbers that can be emulated. I'll head back to Anne.
So if we turn to community boards, Taonga City had not had community boards in the past, and so we had to consider whether to establish community boards now. I'm quite familiar with them. My husband was on the Ohopee community board, and I do understand their value and the contribution that they make to the community. However, we did decide against community boards at this time, and there are a number of reasons for this. So the single member ward system, we believe that the community representation is achieved. Possibly with an at-large arrangement, we could see the argument for community boards to be established. We thought that the timing was just not right with the Future for Local Government review looking at local government for the next thirty years, the call by the Remuneration Authority for central government to look at the role of community boards, and the transition back to democracy after a commission has been in place. We also considered the additional costs of establishing community boards as they would be substantial as the remuneration is based on population. And we assumed that boards would go across the whole city. This was by no means the main reason, but we were mindful that it would place a further burden on rate payers at a time when rates had increased significantly as a result of the work that the commission was doing. Also, there would be an additional burden on the organisation to resource and support community boards at a time when they are under significant pressure from the commission to deliver an LTP that increased significantly the capital works. We do have alternative forums to make sure community views are heard and advocated for. We established place-based community groups for particular projects. For example, the Innovating Streets of the Mount project called for interested persons to apply for a community design group to consider public feedback and determine which trial designs to recommend to council. We also have the Arataki Community Liaison Group, which is a forum where matters of community interest or concern can be discussed about initiatives that impact the Arataki area. In effect, we have a work programme that the council is working to. So in summary, the Local Electoral Act, two thousand and one, requires us to identify communities of interest, provide for effective representation of those communities of interest, and to ensure fair representation of electors. We feel we've not only covered off the requirements of the act and delivered a representation arrangement that meets the needs of our community in Taonga City to be heard around the council table and is fair to all electors. But we've done so in a way that has been inclusive, thorough, and considered. In the final part of our submission, we want to comment on certain points that have been raised by appellants and objectors that we think might be helpful to you as commissioners, as local government commissioners. These relate to requests for ward boundary and name changes, and we'll make some general comments on STV and diversity. So we look first at boundary changes. In response to the submissions that we received on the initial proposal, we amended the boundaries of Maualu Mount Mamanui and Arataki wards and between Arataki and Papamoa wards, which is the slide in front of you now. One of the objectors has asked to switch the Arataki and Papamoa ward boundary back to where it was in the initial proposal, which runs along Domain Road, which goes down the centre of the page. We think it should stay the same as it now includes the main shopping centres, the Papamoa Plaza and Fashion Island and surrounding residential areas. And we agree with the submitter through the initial proposal consultation that these amenities should be in the Papamoa ward. The Greaton and Matau Otumutai ward boundaries. Look, the topography of Taonga City creates natural physical boundaries, such as peninsulas, the harbour and the beach, which are easy to identify. But population distribution is uneven throughout the city, and this did create pinch points in our built-up areas, especially around Greaton and the Matau Otumutai, Bethland Peninsula, the wider Tapapa Peninsula, and we'll make some comments on these. Some submitters to the initial proposal criticised these ward boundaries, but their relief did not ask for the boundaries to be moved. Instead, they were seeking either multi-member wards or a combination of multi-member wards in an at-large arrangement. Greaton has been split by this proposal. That's showing a map of the Tapapa ward and the ward boundary along Chadwick Road. The Greaton community is currently represented by two ward councillors. As a result of separating Greaton into two wards in this proposal, Greaton will continue to be represented by two councillors, one from the Tapapa ward and one from the Tauriko ward. The issues that Greaton faces, especially with roading and roundabouts, increased housing density, and the future of the Racecourse area have absorbed all councillors in previous councils, not just the ward councillors, and will continue to do so. The issues facing Greaton are complex and interwoven with other suburbs and requires a strategic, citywide approach to resolve. We asked staff to have a look at a proposal that kept Greaton together and started as a basis for determining other wards. They came back with option B, which you see in front of you. This is a non-compliant proposal and creates a distortion of communities of interest and ward boundaries then for other communities. We knew that moving the ward boundary from Chadwick Road to Buck's Corner would result in major non-compliance, and this has been confirmed by Statistics New Zealand. The Tauriko ward would be overrepresented by twenty point two-six percent. And Tapapa ward, while complying, is at the top limit of the under-representation of nine point nine-three. The Matau Otumutai ward boundary, on slide twelve, runs along a main arterial road. Brookfield School and Park are on one side and the shops are on the other. We now consider that the ward boundary could be moved to include the school and park and potentially some of the residential areas. But where the boundary with Bethaham is drawn would need careful thought. This relief was not specifically asked for in the submissions to the initial proposal, as mentioned earlier. We acknowledged that in a built-up area where we draw the line for communities will see some residents on one side of the road vote in a different ward to their neighbour. We have tried wherever possible to minimise that situation. That brings us to the name of the Arataki ward. One objector has asked for the name of the Arataki ward to be changed to Mangatawa. Well, our response to this request is that we would need to seek Manu Fenua, that is, Na Portiki and Na Kahuki Mangatawa, at least. We would need to seek their endorsement if there was any thought to use the name Mangatawa, including its context and reference. It's not clear whether the objector has had any discussion with Manu Fenua to inform or support this request. Our understanding is that Mangatawa is a specific area where Mangatawa Marae and its supporting community is established, but may not necessarily extend beyond that. The name Arataki is well-established and accepted for the majority of the area in question, especially the oldest residential area, and Mangatawa would be a new name for a suburb if it were added. Historically, the area is a crossover area for many interests, and it is also a natural junction area. Both of these are in keeping with the literal translation of the name Arataki. Our strategic Maori engagement unit, Tipu Takawaina, have given us their advice, which is that they support the current naming of Arataki on the basis that the names of the wards have been consulted on through Tarangapu, Manu Fenua, Otaranga Moana, and collectively endorsed by all seventeen Iwi and hapu through that forum. Many of these hapu and iwi have an association with Mangatawa, and it has never been proposed for this name to be used in this manner. And even in Hui with Kamatau of these areas, it's never been raised, even casually. For these reasons, based on advice we've received, we do not support the ward name change from Arataki to Mangatawa. Having a look at STV and how it works for single member wards, we did receive advice from our electoral officer throughout the process on how single transferable voting STV works in relation to each option. We do recognise that it is accepted wisdom that wards with three to seven members are preferable to gain the full benefits of proportional representation under STV voting. However, for single ward member arrangements, STV provides the benefits of proportional representation. To be elected under STV, the successful candidate must have fifty percent of the preference votes cast. This is quite different to a first-past-post situation where candidates can be elected with thirty percent or less of the votes. When we look at diversity, the previous representation arrangements, a version of which has been in place since two thousand and four, has not delivered diversity in council. There have been no Maori councillors for twenty years, and there were three women councillors out of eleven elected members in the last term. I should say only three women councillors. The strong involvement in the election process by some communities mean that those communities have had a disproportionate influence on the whole council representation. And this lack of diversity has shaped elections in the past. There are a number of ways the commission can hope to influence the... our commission can hope to influence the quality of the election outcomes, including increasing diversity for those standing for office. And this, in front of you, is our roadmap for a return to elective governance. First and foremost, we can demonstrate the difference that good governance makes so that people are more likely to vote for candidates who will continue that approach. And we can also take collective responsibility for our decisions and for the council. and for the council's performance, taking an advocacy role where required and being honest when an outcome hasn't met our community's expectations. Commissioners and council staff are committed to getting the job done, giving the community confidence in the organisation, and reducing the support for policies that would undermine the progress being made. We can and we will encourage diverse candidates to come forward. Part of most presentations that we make, the chief executive will be rolling out a series of initiatives to achieve this, and potentially, future elections will see more diversity around the council table. And we can keep sending out the message, and we do, that ultimately, the responsibility for ensuring good governance relies on voters making good decisions. That concludes our presentation. Thank you for your listening and for coping with the technology. Stephen and I are happy to answer any questions. Te nā ko tu, te nā ko tu, te nā ko tu, ka tō.
Well done, team, and thanks to both of you for an incredibly detailed presentation. But I think, as we said at the start, this is a crucial process that we need to go through. So that level of detail is certainly well-received. You did make the observation that making a presentation through this technology has elements of challenge around it. Just to alert that for probably 40 or 50% of that presentation, I had a blank computer screen, so I couldn't actually see anybody. But I want to assure you, even though I was looking away from you, I was looking at my iPad, because I had your presentation on my iPad, while I also was texting on my cellphone to Penny to see what was going on. So, the joys of technology. Anyway, we've got there, and be with me. I just now need to try and get this screen to give me a gallery view. Fantastic, the technology's packed. Commissioner, yeah, members of the commission. So, Benita, Sue, Janie, you'll have specific questions, and I'm happy to see who's going to go first. Who wants to shoot? Are you all good? Benita, you're good, no questions. Sue?
I'm happy to wait behind Benita. I've put my hand up, because nobody else has.
No, 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 Benita's good. She's waiting for you.
Okay. You referred, I'm just trying to find it, oh, yeah, paragraph 38 of your presentation, you referred to a survey. What was that survey? Was it a random survey, or what?
That was the survey that went out with that first engagement that we had with the four different models. So, people could go online and fill in the survey, and that's the results of that survey.
So, yeah, so in a sense, they were self-selected. In a sense, it wasn't a random one. That's what I'm trying to say. So, given your comments later in your presentation, and about diversity, what was the voter turnout in the last couple of elections in the city?
Just over 40%.
Okay.
Very low. And dropping, I understand.
Increase last time.
Slight increase last time.
It didn't increase last time?
Slight, slight.
Oh, good, okay. There's more than some had. But so, given that people were invited to fill out a survey, and you say the majority of who did were kind of older, you know, mature white men. It's another far less flattering, isn't it, that phrase about that? But given, why do you think that the, please elaborate why the single-ward, you think that the single-ward proposal would increase participation in the voting? Given that that too is a choice?
Well, I think the advantage we heard extensively, we might have disappointed the submission as we went around the city through the long-term plan process. There were several communities who felt basically excluded from the process. And what this model does is ensure that at least every community across the city will have their local ward representation sitting at the council table and the opportunity for those people who live in those communities to engage directly with their ward councillor, or indeed, any other councillor. But there's a logical point of contact for them. And I think there was a sense, I certainly picked up as we went around, that other people were controlling the city, and we weren't getting our voice as a community heard. And so we were very conscious of that, that the model previously wasn't providing, in their view, adequate representation of their community's needs.
And we heard from people, you know, why would we get involved? No one listens to us. Doesn't make any difference. There's no one there that's interested in us. So, you know, it's all beyond us.
Are the wards that you're proposing homogeneous in terms of income, ethnic diversity, age, those sorts of things? Or what?
The spread of that across the city is uneven, but widespread. So possibly, you would say, and if you look at property values, that's always the guide. So, the Maualu Manganui ward would probably have a higher representative, high-income people. Their houses are worth, you know, many millions of dollars in many cases, as against maybe the, one of the Tapapa Peninsula areas, like Bethlehem area.
I'd make the observation, given what's happened in real estate.
It would be a better example. So, you know, they have a mixture, as any community does, but there's definitely some areas. And that was part of our thinking too, when you look at where the submissions come from. It's Mount Manganui and Papamoa. I think we added Papamoa into the male, over 65 retired people from Papamoa. So there was a feeling that some of those had a big influence on what was happening in the city.
Okay, yeah, no, no, that makes sense, except that these days, of course, your value of your house isn't necessarily an indication of your income, given what's happened in the last five, 10 years.
And I have to add, Sue.
But that's been grizzling, you know.
Generally, has a lower household income than other metros.
Well, certainly Wellington, absolutely. Yeah, we're in a little bubble here. The effective, what do you understand to effective governance means? Sorry, effective representation. I understand what you've described, effective governance, but effective representation, what does that mean for Taonga?
I think what we're saying it means is that people feel that they have a voice, that they're listened to, and that they can take part in the decision-making processes.
Yeah, I agree with that, but also, we have been, as a group of four commissioners, very proactive about reaching out to communities right across the city so that those voices can be heard, and that's a critical element. So whilst the political process will set up a structure for representation, actually, it's the proactivity of the people in those roles and their linkage with the communities of interest, not just the geographic ones, but the sectoral groups and the specific interest groups. And that's a responsibility of any councillor, no matter how they are elected. And I think the issue is as relevant for an at-large councillor to make sure that they are hearing all of the voices across the city as opposed to have perhaps a special interest group that they particularly have an interest in. So the responsibility falls on any elected member to make sure that they are actively talking to, engaging, listening, and hearing the voices of the community.
Okay, just focusing on the engagement part of it. I mean, it's effective representation runs two ways, doesn't it? It's my access to my elected members and their access to me and the people on my street and the people in my wider suburb. 10 in 2004, when you had a population that has now increased 50% in the 16 years from then, 10 in 2004, nine, well, nine plus one in 2022. In terms of access to bodies, why do you think that's appropriate? Still appropriate?
I think what we're saying is that it's actually the quality of your interaction that counts more than the numbers. And part of the work that we've been doing, as Stephen says, is how do you reach out to those communities in all the different groups at an early stage, and the quality of that interaction, and the quality then of the listening and the taking the ideas back and formulating policy. So it's actually the quality of your councillors that counts, not the numbers that's sitting around the table.
In terms of, say, a 10-hour working day, which is not unusual probably for some councillors, for five days a week.
They're doing that at the moment, yes.
Yeah, I'm sure you are, maybe more. But how much time do they spend at the council debating and discussing and getting passionate and then deciding? And how much time do they spend outside finding out what's going on and what people are thinking and saying?
Sue, that's always the balance for a representative, and particularly in local government, where you are so accessible. And I think that's the beauty of what we're proposing with those smaller geographically-based wards. They're not too large. It's a good size for communication, for, you know, regular communication, regular interaction. I think some of the comments from the review and observation team of the previous council's operations were that they spent far too much time sitting around the table, debating issues that actually were too far into the detail. So good governance, as you know, doesn't get into how you design a pedestrian crossing. You are up at a higher level, making those strategic decisions, holding the staff accountable for enforcing those. And the majority of your work should be out in the community, listening and talking with people and understanding, like, you know, what's actually happening on the ground.
And perhaps advocating from time to time on behalf of decisions. That's great. Thanks. I'll go. I know my colleagues have got questions.
Yep.
It's me for the moment.
But thank you. Benita?
Kia ora, te nā ano kourua, and just apologies to the submitters. I know that they're waiting in the sidelines, but just a very, very quick question in terms of your comments around Taonga Pu and their inputs into the whole process, and especially around the Arataki ward name, et cetera. Can I take it, the fact that we don't have any formal submission from them as such to the final proposal, that they're happy in general with the totality of your final proposal?
I think that's the understanding that we have. They certainly would not hesitate to tell us if they didn't agree.
Kapa'au, thank you.
But it has been widely passed with them. And of course, they appoint the members to our strategic, the Strategy Finance and Risk Committee. And so the conversation would have been had also with their members. So when we had the sign-off from that committee, we can assume that they've taken part of the Rangapu with them.
Kapa'au. And as I said, the fact that there's no other submissions coming from any of those 17 hapu or the many iwi groupings would sort of give that indication. I just wanted to get some clarification. Kia ora kourua.
Can I just ask one question that I do think's really, really important? Clearly, the focus is around the nine wards. And my question is simply, given that this is a model that is not common across local authorities across New Zealand, do you have a view about reviewing this within the next three or six years? In other words, should the commission support this proposition? Would you have, do you have a view in terms of your recommendations through to the newly-elected council about when they should review this model? Do you have a perspective on that?
Thank you, Brendan. I think what we're saying is that this is for this time.
Yeah.
As a result of where Taonga's been.
Yes.
And it should be reviewed. I don't think we have a view that it should be reviewed out of the normal cycle, but it may not be, and I think we said in our presentation, it may not be the model forever and a day. But at this point in time, we believe that this model that we're proposing will suit Taonga best.
Yeah, I think that's why I picked up, because what you've said is, for this time, this is the model. And what I'm concerned about is, you know, like, for how long is the time before we? And so we can either, we can either say, look, we better have another look at this in three years' time, just to make sure it's working and cemented, or go into the six-year cycle. I'm just keen to hear what your perspectives might be on that. I mean, you know, it's kind of like, God, if this goes wrong, or if this goes right, you know, it's kind of like... Okay, so you're open, you're not, you're flexible in terms of when you think that might be useful, and not necessarily hanging out for the whole cycle of six years.
Not at all. You know, to be honest, Brendan, we found a community that was very fragmented and felt excluded from the process. And so, you know, we're trying to bring it together. Now, that might not be the case in three or four or five years' time.
Yeah.
Depending on how the council works with its community.
Correct, yeah, okay. Thanks for the lead. Okay, so you've got your hand up. I'm hoping you're nearly there.
Yeah, I have got a couple of questions, just on that. I had one, now I've got two. In terms of fragmentation within the city, in terms of the city that you drew the short straw for, as it were, how is nine wards going to contribute to Taonga coming together as Taonga, as opposed to, you know, Papamoa and then Bethlehem and then, you know, Jadaia and then Otumoto, say? How's that, a single ward, nine wards in a geographically constrained city, how's that going to help develop a Taonga ward?
I think the answer is, it's not the whole answer. Of course, it's not the whole answer. We're doing a whole lot of other work to try and bring the city together, not the least being trying to rebuild a centre of the city that gives it a bit of heart and a bit of soul and tells its wonderful, rich cultural, historical stories. So the ward, what we're proposing with the representation is really just one part of that, and it's really focused on giving those communities the feeling that they are represented around the table, that they're not forgotten, that they're not excluded, and that they do have a voice. And they may lose the arguments, but their voice is still sitting at the table.
Okay, you know, that makes sense. And just...
Last one, Sue, absolute last one.
Hang on, this is my last one, but I'm going to ask for some information in the rider reply, okay? In your rider reply, could you just tell us a bit more about that community building that you're doing? That'd be, you know, not, you know, not, but just a couple of examples besides the water, if I may, the city centre project. Last question is, efficient representation. You've used that term a number of times in your paperwork. Which of the criteria are you addressing when you say that this, whatever, would be an efficient governance model? It was one of the reasons, for example, I've just lost my page, but it was a reason given for the, I think for the, yeah, for the final proposal. It's in one of your minutes, but it's referred, the term is used elsewhere as well. Efficient representation.
I thought, I, I've used effective representation.
No, but, um, okay, I'll just find the reference.
Just off the top of my head, I, I can't, I can't, I'll find it and come back to you. Have, have a.
Maybe in the rider reply, that'd be useful.
Yep.
And I'll find a reference and get somebody to email it to, um, to Coral or somebody. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Brilliant. Okay, so, uh, thanks again, uh, for the effort in answering those questions. And also, um, I do apologize to the appellants for the delay. Uh, but I think you'd appreciate how important this is. Penny, um, are you able to bring in our first, uh, that's Barry Scott?
Uh, so no, I'm not able to bring Barry in. Barry hasn't been able to join us, as it turned out.
Okay.
So I do have some speaking notes that I can, um, circulate. Barry wasn't a hundred percent sure whether he would be able to make it or not, so I will email those round to, um.
Okay.
Appropriately, but we do have our second speaker, Greg, with us, um, who's been waiting patiently. So I'm bringing Greg into the meeting now.
Okay. And for commissioners, that, uh, if you go to page one thirty-one.
All right, it looks like Greg has joined us and hopefully in a second, uh, he will be able to unmute himself. And if possible, turn the video on and we should be good to go. Lovely, Greg, we can hear you now.
Yes, I'm not sure if you can see me and I'm not sure how to do that, but.
Oh, join the re, join the rest of the world, Greg. Oh, it's worked. There you go.
I was worried that you'd see straight into my ear or, or nose or something, but no.
Greg, welcome. You've seen the format, uh, rather than go into introductions, I'm just pretty keen for you to get into, uh, a summary of your presentation. You'd appreciate it. We've had a good read of it. So the short version and then a chance for us to ask questions.
Tena kautukatu, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, it's a very important matter, the democratic method of electing our representatives. Interesting to see the commission claiming that they've demonstrated good governance by claiming that they have instigated good governance. Um, and certainly the commission hasn't been characterized by a diversity of opinion that you would get in a normal elected council. So I'm trying to make the point that it's very different for a commission to what it is for an a mayor, mayor or an elected council. Uh, when the commission says they've heard concerns about previous councils not listening to them, I've heard exactly the same about the commission. Now, I make no comment on that, whether that's true or not, but it's par for the course. You know, it's actually par for the course in any form of government that people are going to say that they're not being listened to. And it's usually if they're not agreed, that's just what happens. I think the significant changes to the electoral system here are a response to the bitter interpersonal problems that this triennium experience between the mayor and councillors that led to the government intervention. And, but I think that the, um, the proposal is, is an overreaction to that. And partly based on a faulty conclusion, uh, from the review, review and observer team that led to the appointment of the commission. This constantly is claimed that the battle for the mayoralty didn't end because three unsuccessful candidates were elected as councillors and therefore, you know, trouble ensued. Well, that ignores the fact that the previous term, which was my term as mayor, four unsuccessful candidates were elected as councillors. And of course, we had plenty of diversity of opinion and we had plenty of argument, but we didn't get to that dysfunctional stage. And I heard Commissioner Sel would repeat the error that a casting vote would be available to the mayor and give the mayor that little bit extra power. And I, I've said this before, the casting vote is entirely the prerogative of the council to determine, so it's not guaranteed going forward. So I think we've got to be careful with this even number of councillors and relying on a casting vote for the mayor. Um, in the first round of consultation, because there've been several rounds, the proposal gaining the most support was an at-large model. This was rejected in favour of single member wards. And because of the confusion around the way the whole consultation structured, many of those submitters didn't submit to the next round because they thought their submissions would be taken into account next time around, and of course they weren't. So I think that any claim that the single member wards proposal has majority support, albeit by the narrowest of margins, is, is actually untenable. Um, I believe that having single member wards isn't conducive to councillors acting in the best interest of the city as a whole. When you're sworn in, you swear to serve the whole city, not just the area that elects you. Now, a number of years ago, I was a ward councillor for fifteen years, and I can tell you from personal experience that the vast majority of constituents will phony you for assistance. And the first thing they'll say, you're the ward councillor for such and such. And they expect to be rightly or wrongly acting in the interest of that ward, not in conflict, you know, that, um, that comes about through having, in particularly, single member wards. Um, further, the decision on which would choose to stand for election becomes critical. It could be that several of the best candidates objectively, because I mean, quite frankly, it's up to the community to decide who's good or who's bad. But if several good candidates stand one ward, only one can be elected. So I think what will happen is people will hold their nominations back to the last minute. They can assess their one and only chance against who else is standing. An equally problematic strong person could announce early and try and sort of put other people off from, from running in that particular ward in order to be pragmatic about their chances. But none of this really forms part of the commissioner's decision. There's a vague assertion that it might be cheaper to stand in a small award than at large. And I guess if you're putting up signs, that could be partly correct. But there's no really evidence of any rigor being applied to the review by staff or commissioners. I mean, STV was mentioned briefly today, but it didn't really come into that decision. It's the voting method in Taonga and clearly it doesn't work in single member wards. Voters are told to rank candidates in order, but in a single member ward, only the ones will ever be counted. There is no possible scenario where twos, threes, fours are going to be counted. And I did hear Commissioner Tolly perhaps express an opposite view, so I'll leave it to, to you people to determine which is right, but I'm reliably told whatsoever. Um, there's no need, oh, sorry, there's also a need for an odd number of mayor of councillors, um, because, I've mentioned that before, there's no guarantee of a, um, casting vote, that is the prerogative of, of council. A few more, you know, one more person's not going to break the bank. In fact, it doesn't cost any more. They all just get paid a little less. It now seems to me that a mix of at-large and wards that prove no problem other than this triennium is the way to go. That is, if we can't have a predominantly a large system, because if you read up about, um, STV, you'll find that STV coupled with an at-large system is likely to produce the most diverse council of all. Um, I did want to spend a little bit of time about talking about something we only remember at ANZAC Day, and that's called democracy. And always the, when the Minister of Local Government replaced the elected council with commissioners, it was to end at the triennial election. And it was probably welcomed, but there's been a growing community disquiet um, as to whether a, a, an election this year is going to take place. And only yesterday was reported that the commissioners themselves have recommended an extension to their own term. And in fact, the chair said that the, that would address the risk of factionalized elected council. Um, um, of a factionalized elected council unraveling commission decisions. And to paraphrase a reaction of Stephen Fry when he was responding to concern that he might offend someone. I say to the concern that an elected council might undo some of the commissions of an imposed one. So what? I mean, that is democracy. And the wonderful thing about democracy is that it's the choice of the people. It's neither good nor bad. It's what's chosen. And this is the opposite of what appears to be a bit of a campaign at the moment to undermine democracy in Taonga. Um, so I want to mention that the, um, Human Rights Commission of New Zealand, uh, states that everybody has the right to choose to take part in the government of their country, and this applies to both local and central government. It shouldn't be necessary to say, but I believe that the right to take part in the conduct of public affairs, including the right to vote, um, is at the core of democratic governments. And that is expressed by the Human Rights Commission. Um, Ruth Dyson, in speaking to Environment Canterbury, when it had continued, um, removal of its democracy, said, democracy still is inconvenient, especially to those in power, but that's the point. It's basis of ensuring the interests of the powerful, don't ride roughshod over the powerless. So my point in all this is that the electrical, electoral, electoral system being discussed here today is significant. But whether there are ten or elected members and whether they are elected by a ward or at large, to my mind, is still nowhere near as important as holding an election itself. A democratic election for the Taonga citizens to choose their government for better or for worse. And the Law Society backs me up on this. And they say it, and albeit in regards to Canterbury, the argument that appointed commissioners need to stay in power to maintain momentum and decision-making is not a robust justification for the continued partial suspension of democracy. Yet, that is precisely what's been said here. Just want to conclude with some observations from Sir Humphrey Appleby. You may have heard of him. TV series called Yes Prime Minister, discussing local democracy. And Sir Humphrey says, if the right people don't have the power, do you know what happens? The wrong people get it. Councillors, ordinary voters. And that, folks, is the mantra of certain people trying to keep democracy in Taonga. So I ask all fair-minded people, including the local government commission, to reject calls for a further extensions of Taonga's governance. And ask the LGC to determine a fair method of election for which the aforementioned reasons must be other than that chosen by the current governance. That's all I've got to say.
Uh, thank you, Greg. Um, I'm, I've got no.
I've rambled a bit and I've gone off topic slightly, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, 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 so for purity and absolute clarity, the local government commission is not engaged in any way, shape, manner or form to any extension of the current protocol that's in place. So that's, that's not our arena. It's, that's absolutely no discussion, um, that I, I've seen or heard nothing in that space. So I can't imagine why we're here today deliberating over what the new representation should be, if there's some other action occurring that we just know nothing about. But I would, would want to hear from Anne, um, in terms of clarity around that, and we'll look for that in the rider reply for that particular point. The second thing we'll look for in the rider reply, um, is the observation you made about, uh, the casting vote, Stephen. I think that'll be important. Um, because you have made that observation, the mayor has the casting vote, but then there, it's up to the councillors to whether they have it or not. So I wouldn't mind, Stephen, if you just clarify that, um, a little more in the rider reply.
And, and Chair Brendan, I have made that point, and this is why I can't understand. And I'm still hearing things that I have corrected, including the, the, uh, the claim of, of what went wrong with the, the, the council Australian. And both those things I've refuted and I'm still hearing it.
Okay, well, so we'll get that in the rider reply. I just, uh, there's commissioners' questions, um, Benita and then Sue. Just get the screen right. Where's Benita? Benita? Yep.
Thank you, um, Greg. That's been really informative and helpful this morning. Um, just to, just in regards to your comments around, uh, democracy and something that has affected, as you will probably know, uh, iwi maori in the democracy spaces, that we've always been subject also to the tyranny of the majority. So that's one way of looking at it from a different perspective. So just following that vein then, my question to you is around, um, your thoughts or comments on the final proposals, uh, intent, part of the intent of final proposal is to make the democratic process more equitable for all voters, including Maori voters for the Maori ward by, um, making sure that everyone has the same access to the same level of, of voting, i.e. one ward member and the mayor at large. So do you have any comments around, around that compared to the previous comments?
Well, I guess you can choose which method you, you choose to, you choose to vote in a geographical ward. You choose to vote in the Maori ward, uh, provided you qualify for that, of course. Um, so I think there is choice available there. Um, it's obviously, it's, um, um, I think that probably at large for everybody with STV would deliver you that, that diversity that you said.
Is it just me or has Greg frozen?
He, he's frozen.
Not only on ethnic grounds, but, um, but socio-economic grounds as well. You get a real mix of people. You're not possibly going to get that in the single member wards.
Thanks, Greg. You froze a little bit in the middle there, but I'm, I think I've got the gist of your comment.
I, I was scared.
Kapa, so can I just extend that a bit further by, you know, you, you referred, I think I caught you referring to the fact that with the STV system and the at-large system, you think that that would also enable, um, the kind of representation that Maori might be looking for. Um, how, how, how might that happen when that's purely reliant on who stands? Uh, and who's elected as opposed to ensuring a voice for tangatafinua on council? I don't know if I've made a question or a statement there, but just some thoughts.
Yeah, I, I missed a bit part of yours as well, but I can say if you go back far enough, so this is twenty, twenty-five years ago, uh, when I think the whole of Taonga was at large, um, you had two, um, on each council, there were about two Maori councillors. Uh, the late Maria Natai and Matthew Dixon, and they were on council at the same time. So that seemed to deliver diversity. It was when we went to these wards that people found it more difficult to get elected if they weren't part of the majority, um, group, I suppose. And so I think if you had at large and you had STV, why wouldn't you get that and even more?
Okay, Kapa, thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Benita. Sue?
Uh, but Benita's covered that, so thank you, Benita. Thank you, Greg.
Okay. Um, thank you, Greg. We're done.
Cheers.
Thanks for your participation. Okay, um, uh, I'd like to take one more, Penny. Um, where's Penny? Can we, can we take David?
Yes, I will, um, just bring David into the meeting now. Um, I just want to take an opportunity as well to say, we have got two people who've called in by phone. One of them is Barry from earlier, um, and the other one is Hilton. I just wanted to say that so they can hear, that I can see that they're here. Um, that's really the only purpose of saying it out loud because they don't have the visual component coming in by phone.
Okay, so what we'll do is.
Page number for David's submission, please?
Yes, yes, one fifty-nine for David. And we'll do that, we'll take David's and then we'll take about a ten minute break. Um, and then we'll kick back on again, otherwise we're going to be dragging out too far. Okay.
Okay, I'm just, um, bringing, I've pushed the button at this end to, for David to join our meeting. I think, David, there might be something hopefully showing up on your screen that you'll need to click to come and join us as a panelist. There we go. That looks promising. Excellent. David, we can see you in the meeting now, so when you're ready, if you can unmute yourself and we should be able to hear you. And if you want to switch your video on, that would be helpful.
Kia ora, David.
Yeah, good morning, uh, commissioners. I will call you that because I'm not very good at remembering names.
That's all right. That's easy. Uh, you've seen the process, so you're welcome to give a bit of a summary of, um, of the submission you've already made to us.
Okay, just to give you a bit of background of who I am, uh, I came down here in nineteen seventy-seven. Uh, I have, uh, for a consultancy firm, engineering consultancy firm. Uh, I've been the senior planning officer of the Tarara, then Tarara County Council. And then the mid-eighties, I was an elected member for half of this Arakaki ward, uh, when it was in the Tarara County Council. Uh, and from then on, I've had my own consultancy practice in Taonga, also doing development work. And I've lived in this Papamoa area, this ward area, uh, for thirty-five years. Um, I'd just like to like one apology, and I'll give the reasons for it, is that, um, I stated that it was not originally advertised. I've discovered that it is. The reason for that is that this council and, and especially these commissioners, these current commissioners, um, have taken it personally against me, so I have no inclination to put a submission on any form to these commissioners, and that will come to a head soon. I won't say anything more. So I'm grateful for you to hear what I have to say because it concerns me greatly. So I'm grateful for you to hear what I have to say because it concerns me greatly, very greatly, what Anne Tolly said today and what is in the submissions about the name Arateki. Let's be quite blunt here, Arateki does not represent this area. Arateki, going back historically, was the area from Concord Avenue to Sunrise Avenue, if you look at your map. In other words, about two-thirds of the original Arateki is in this ward. The other third is in the new Mount Maua New Ward. Arateki's not a, is not a sole name to this area. There's an Arateki visitor centre in the Waitekere Ranges. There's Arateki Honey in Waiaitaku, south of Rotorua, and there's an Arateki Road in Havelot North. The reason why I have chosen Mangatawa, and let's just get one thing clear, I have actually sent my submission on the 2nd of December last year to Naapariki, and I've had conversations with Kristen. So they're well aware of my submission, whether they, and I believe that I got a positive result after speaking to Kristen and one other person there. Mangatawa or Naapariki area is very synonymous to this area. Would appear that Anne Tolly is, and the commissioners, and that surprises me because Commissioner Wozley, through his past and present, for the last thirty-odd years, is well aware of this area. Arateki only comprises that area, that residential area in this ward, from Gerben Road to Sunrise Avenue. A very small part of the overall. I think the map shows the representation here in that you've got a, a large, almost fully developed area north of the state highway, number one. And the majority of those people, the majority of those people are like me, over 65, white. The part south of the state highway is rural land, a couple of small marais. And it is predominantly Maori land or Maori occupied land. Mangatawa, as you can see there on the map, is a hill. It overlooks the whole of the ward. Anne Tolly doesn't seem to understand that past history and current, that the Mangatawa incorporation and the Naapariki original land holdings covered a large proportion, at least, I don't know what, of this ward. It is a, a name synonymous to this area, far more so than Eric, the word Arateki. In fact, the large areas of this, presumably Arateki area are now actually called Bay Fair. People in it liken it to being in Bay Fair, not Arateki. Arateki, there's just a small, fairly small primary school, a couple of shops, a kindergarten, it's got a community centre granted. But since Bay Fair Shopping Centre opposite and part of this, little part of the Mount Maua New Ward now, that is now, that is why this area, generally speaking, is now called Bay Fair. This area is not synonymous to Arateki, the whole ward. I've chosen Mangatawa because the Naapariki marae or more especially the Mangatawa marae is, is on the foothills, the northern foothills of that area and overlooks most of the residential area. For council to say that this area's got strong links to Maori is a rubbish. Absolutely rubbish. It overlooks the, overlooks the Pacific Ocean, and that's why a lot of the developments have got the word ocean or Pacific in them. As to the other submission with respect to its eastern boundary, I'll leave that over to the commission to sort out. I just think it should be down to Main Row.
Okay.
All right, so that's where I am.
Got it, David. Can you just, just clarify for me, you said you spoke to somebody, and I didn't get the chance to write it down, who gave you an impression that they supported your proposition for the name change? Who was it that you said you spoke to?
Yeah, it was a Kristen, I think it was a female, K-I-S-T-I-N. And apparently that was the appropriate person to speak to.
Kristen at, at what? What at?
At Naapariki.
Okay. So your understanding is by speaking to this person, you've got clarity that there's support for your proposition, is that what you're saying?
I spoke to her on the phone, plus on top of that, the same day, on the 2nd of December, I forwarded a copy of my submission. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions, other questions of David? Are we? Benita?
Kura, David, thank you for your submission. I used to live on Espin, just off Sandhurst, so I was very familiar with the area. And my son actually went to Arataki Kindy, so I know the area that you're talking about quite well. And I will say that initially, that was one of the questions I had about the name Arataki being applied to such a large geographic area. But just coming back to Anne's earlier comments, when I asked about the fact that Te Rangapu, which is the collective that they had, had reps consulting with and through, have, have not had any objections to any of the naming in the area. Just wanting to get your thoughts around the fact that if iwi and hapu are fine with the names of areas and perhaps challenge your thinking a little bit around the modern city constructs of where names may sit as opposed to traditional iwi and hapu constructs. And can you just clarify for me, Kristen from Naapariki, is Naapariki one of the hapu of the area? I'm not quite sure.
It is the main hapu of the area.
Right.
It is also associated with the Mangatawa incorporation, which is a very large shareholding. If you look on your map, there's a blank area of housing between Hibiscus Avenue and Sanders Drive, you'd be aware of it, which is now part of the under-construction retirement village. Now, that is part of the Mangatawa incorporation area as well as the large industrial area just south of the, of the state highway. So they are, they're big players in the area.
Okay, and when, when you say you sent your submission off to them and had a telephone conversation, has there been, just following Brendan's train of thought, has there been any further interaction or indication formally from Naapariki that they are supportive of your suggestions?
No, I didn't, I didn't hear any reply at all.
Okay, so that would indicate to me that, that there, there might not have been that implicit support.
You could say it either way, as I say in the telephone conversation, certainly not the indication.
Okay, I think we've called it quits there. David, thanks for the presentation, thanks for those observations. Wish us luck in our deliberations.
Thank you.
Kura. I reckon we need a break. We allowed ourselves half an hour, but can we, can we just, can we take a break and come back at 11 o'clock? Give ourselves quarter of an hour, is that okay with everybody? General nodding of heads. Penny, you'll just instruct what happens?
Yes, so just to remind everybody that our live stream will run while we take a break. So if everyone can just switch off their cameras and mute their sound, that would be ideal. And just to let the people who are with us
I think we're all back. Are we all back, Penny? I think we are. Okay, so we'll reconvene and we are now going to bring in Hilton Rhodes.
So, Brendan, Barry, who was on our schedule to speak first, is actually here with us. So I'm just wondering if we should give Barry his chance and then Hilton next.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to page 218.
And I will push the button here, which hopefully will allow Barry to start talking to us. And so Barry, if you can hear me at your end, if you can unmute yourself, and I think to do that, you need to push star six on your keypad.
Okay, I hear.
Yes, we can hear you. Wonderful.
Well, welcome, Barry.
Thank you. Welcome to you. And I would like to, now that I see everybody up there, I'm, I decided not to go on Zoom because I've just got out of hospital.
Sure.
And I've just got out of bed and I'm not dressed for television. So, but you can hear me okay?
We can, Barry, and you shoot. We'll just, we'll listen to you very carefully.
Well, first of all, I want to express my thanks to Donald and EJ from the LGC, who over the last year or so have been a considerable help to me. They've patiently taken me through the learning process of the representation review. And boy, you guys have been so, so good to me. Anyway, another thing before I read my brief statements, and I'd like to comment on Stephen's remark earlier, when he said that we got in the results from the survey and we saw that they were predominantly from elderly white males in the Papamoa region. Well, I'm elderly, I'm eighty-four, I'm unmistakably white, and I'm unmistakably male. But I would like to mention that I'm also trustee of, with two of my children, of our Fana trust, which includes our twenty-one interests in Maori land. Two of my children speak Maori, they too are unmistakably white. My daughter has a bachelor's degree in Maori arts and crafts. My two great-grandmothers are both full-blooded Maori ladies who married Scottish gentlemen. So all I'm saying is, we shouldn't jump to conclusions when we're looking at surveys and things like that. I would also like to comment to on just a couple of things that Anne covered in her report. When she mentioned community boards and the cost of it, well, as I mentioned in my rather lengthy appeal submission, which I hope you all read, that the, what are called colloquially stuff-ups of the council over the years, it could have been prevented by consultation with the community, the cost of those would have covered the cost of community boards many times over. And I would make one other comment on community boards, and that is that I had the pleasure of attending a meeting with Anne and two of her senior staff members in a housing settlement. And when they spent an hour with us talking about certain problems there. Now, those people were completely chuffed, they were delighted. And though, although the problem itself isn't one for which there's much of a solution, I think they did a great thing there. And it's all very well, but it's not the practical way to do things. And this is why I'm so concerned that we need community boards. Because they are that tier that will just help bridge a gap, not the gap, but create a bridge between council and community. Before I commence my own address, I would like to mention the appeal by Papamoa Residents and Rate Payers Association. Philip Brown, the spokesman for Papamoa Rate Payers, had intended to be present to represent his group, but he could not change on relatively short notice other arrangements that had already been made, not even to speak by Zoom or phone. At present, Philip is in what most people would regard as lost in the black blocks of the South Island. Anyway, before he plunged into the whirlwind, Philip asked me to tell the commission, which I'm now doing, that Papamoa Rate Payers has not abandoned its position on the subject of what Taronga's next council should look like. And it stands by every part of its appeal submission. The submission draws the commission's attention to the fact that the council's proposal does not represent the wishes of the people. The commission, the submission points to the need for whole-of-city councillors. It opposes single-member wards, it supports multi-member and mixed wards with at-large councillors. It supports community boards, and it points to the need for them to be given real powers. With regard to the giving community boards real powers, I remind the commission of the position of the Thames Coromandel District Council and its enlightened mayor of a few years ago, which in effect delegated to the boards a lot of the minor powers of council and let council get itself get on with the main business. And there was quite a considerable rates reduction. Papamoa Rate Payers is the most active of all the rate payers and residents groups in Taronga. Its online discussions on community matters can involve as many as a thousand people or more. It's a pity that Papamoa Rate Payers isn't listened to more often. I respectfully ask the commission to make a note of Papamoa Rate Payers' position. I'll now go on to my home submission, which isn't going to be the lecture that I had planned, circumstances interrupted. My appeal submission to the council sets out my thoughts on the best representation system, namely a mixture of multi-member wards and at-large councillors to improve the possibility that we will end up with a diverse body of councillors that will have a whole-of-city vision. As I said, you will, I hope, have read my submission, I think it ran about fifteen pages or more, and will have formed your own views about its merits. There has been a lot of talk about trust and confidence. None of our councillors were untrustworthy. It's just that we cease to trust in their ability to focus on the job and lost their confidence in their ability to carry it out. We're not looking for a bunch of super councillors next time around, nor are we ever going to get them, nobody's ever going to get that. But if we provide an electoral structure that encourages talented people and diversity instead of one-trick ponies and parochialism, and a governance system that pushes them towards working for the whole of the city, we would have gone a long way towards improving management of our wonderful place. There has been a suggestion that when a new councillor is elected, there should be a crown manager appointed to help them find their feet. That's not a matter for the commission, but I support the idea. But what would help the councillors get on with their whole-of-city job, and is within the commission's purview, is the establishment of community boards. The councillors of a complex and growing city, yes, we're not only growing, we're also a pretty complex place. Partly made by our peninsula geographical layout. We need, the council needs as much community input and support as it can get. I've covered in my appeal submission all the usual arguments in favour of community boards, but I want to spend a moment or two on extra advantages that I believe boards can fear. Taronga will soon have a Maori ward councillor, and for a whole lot of reasons that I won't go into, they're not going to have an easy job. They're going to face a lot of criticism, whatever they do, however they will they do it. Many of the problems that he or she will be called upon to deal with will also be general community problems. And the best results would be obtained if the whole community worked on them. If we have community boards, that assistance will be forthcoming. And as I have said in my submission, why not have a board meeting on a marae? That would be a great idea. The second matter has been very much in our face over the last few weeks, climate change. The floods in Queensland and New South Wales have devastated businesses, homes and lives. And this was preceded by wildfires and droughts still ravage parts of the country. It's happening here too, especially in the South Island now, although thankfully not yet on the same scale. Central government will devolve some prevention powers to councils, and councils will inevitably pass some duties on to the community. And what better vehicle for that than a community board? Boards can organise at grassroots levels in ways that are simply not available or known to council staff. Board members know who to contact, yeah, ring Bill down the road. They know the local scene, oh yeah, I know that place. The local risk areas, yeah, that's, they'll go up in smoke one day, and so on in a way that council staff never can. They can form community armies to fight battles when they arise, and most of all, to prevent problems from arising. Please, give Taronga Community Boards. They will contribute to our community's wellbeing. The numbers from the council's poll last year have been already quoted to you, and I have given you my opinion about jumping to conclusions. But whatever spend the council likes to put on the numbers, they undeniably show that a large number of those who responded preferred at-large candidates or a mixture of at-large and ward. And also that they preferred multi-member wards over single-member wards. Representation reviews aren't decided by a popularity poll. But it has to be said that quite often, the community shows a degree of perception and common sense that markedly exceeds that of a local government and its councillors or commissioners. I respectfully submit that this is one of those times. Thank you. I'm willing to answer questions.
Brendan, can't hear you.
Barry, thanks for the submission, the summary of your submission. You made the observation that you had presented fifteen pages, and you're absolutely right, there's an extraordinary level of detail in there. We should acknowledge, you're obviously have a health condition that's precluding you for participating any more than you have over the phone. But I am going to say, look, it'd be lovely to actually see you, and we do offer you our genuine regards for your good health. Appreciate the deep meaning in the way you have presented, and you haven't prepared this paper overnight, you put a lot of work into it, and I want to acknowledge that to you.
Thank you, thank you.
No, no, that's my pleasure. Janie has a question for you, Barry.
Hello, Barry. Just got one question. Do you think that now is the right time for community boards? And the reason I ask this question is that there is going to be quite a large increase in spending by the council because of the lack of infrastructural investment, that the government's doing a review on the future of local government. There's quite a lot for your community to get their heads around at the moment. There's quite a lot for your community to get their heads around at the moment, and also I'm concerned maybe that the staff at the council are going to be very busy doing the work they need to do, and to set up community boards would take quite a lot of extra money and time. What's your thought about that?
I don't think that cost should be the sole determining factor, Janey, certainly within reason, yes, but not the sole determining factor, and I'd point perhaps a little tongue-in-cheek to saying that, well, maybe if we'd had community boards before, we wouldn't have made all these mistakes. But more so, I see the boards, as in the case of the Thames Coromandel District Council, where they were especially successful, doing a lot of the legwork for the staff, and saving allowing the staff to get stuck into more detail and not have to put up with constant barrage of emails from nuisances like me. So in summary, I don't think the cost should be the determining factor. I think there are cost-saving benefits in having boards. The amount of servicing boards, depending on how many of course for a year, possibly looking through other statistics, wouldn't exceed a million dollars, and in the overall scheme of things, that isn't an out-of-the-way sum. So far as timing is concerned, is there ever the right time? Is it, when's the top of the market, when's the bottom of the market, when does the need arise? So that's a matter of conjecture. Let's face it, representation reviews are something of a gaudian, not, aren't they? Sometimes they need a slash with a couple of S to untie them. Perhaps that's a bit of juice, but I get what I mean. So, yeah, so that's my position. No, now, now is the time. With all due respect to previous councils, there was probably an aversion to sharing information, and that is maybe why in previous councils we didn't have community boards. But now I think is the time, the cost isn't or shouldn't be the deterrent, and it isn't a great sum anyway.
Just one quick last question, Barry. There is a proliferation of resident associations and community groups in Taronga that I'm aware of. You don't think that community boards on top of all these other community committees would in fact be overkill for Taronga?
Community boards, of course, are required to work with all of the other groups, and let's face it, our experience in Taronga has been that not all groups, and I won't call them right, though, not all groups have a sole focus on the wellbeing of the city. And some of them are more local than board city. No, I don't think that a proliferation, I've spoken with Philip Brown about this, and as I said, Papamoa Rate Payers is the largest group in the city. He sees no reason why his rate payer's group can't attend to his neighbourhood people and also to the community group people. Did I express that well? No, I don't see any harm in the two working together, but the big advantage, of course, is that community boards have statutory authority and statutory powers, and have access to some council information that rate payer's groups don't have access to. Now, sometimes that lack of access to information leads to pretty nasty misunderstandings, oh, they won't tell us, so they're hiding something. It's not always that, it's just sort of not important or not relevant some of the times, but community boards can tap into the information and say, well, yeah, that is, yeah, the council is doing the right thing. Look, I'll admit that more often than not, far more often than not, I've found out that I've been barking up a wrong tree, and I've gone to the council, and the staff, Coral here in particular, have been very helpful to me, and I thought, oh, I got the wrong end of the stick there, and they put me right. But sometimes rate payer's groups get the wrong end of the stick, and the community boards have access to information that removes that risk.
Thanks, Barry, that's great.
Barry, there's one more question from Benita.
Yep.
I would be ringan mahi no ikiakui, me tor whaka papa. Just want to mahi to you, Barry, for clarifying your whaka papa. And yeah, it is a bit dangerous when we start making sweeping statements without knowing those sorts of things, and I bet my son just looks like you in your tamadaki too. I just also want to acknowledge the work you're doing with your tamadaki on your whana trust, I know that's not an easy role as well. But Barry, my question is, you know, you've just made a comment around community boards having the capacity to do the legwork for staff. So are you in saying that, are you saying that community boards need to have the delegated authority to do a lot of this stuff, make a lot of the decisions at community levels where council delegates that authority to enable council to get on with the bigger jobs? Is that essentially what you're saying?
Yes, of course, that depends a lot on the council itself. I mean, if it begrudges the appointment of community boards, they're going to say, let's starve the community boards, let's not delegate powers, let's starve them of powers. And again, I come back to Coromandel Thames Valley Board. So there has to be, yes, delegation, how broad that delegation is, and I'm assuming it would be tentative to begin with. It is my real hope that we will get a crown manager when our people come back, who will guide us along the necessary paths, not only, you know, this is how you behave when you're in council, you don't call each other names when you're sitting around the table, but also, this is how you work out your relationships with your various, because community boards aren't the only community group, of course, there's heaps of them around, and I don't mean rate payer's groups, I mean representative groups. So, simple answer, yes, it requires delegation, which requires forward thinking. And so far as whana was concerned, my daughter Kath Bigum, yes, I wonder, I wonder if we're connected somewhere there, Benita?
Bound to be, but we'll take that conversation offline, Barry.
I think we will.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, okay, I think we're just about done there. Barry, look, I just want to talk to your dignity and your respect in your presentation, and I genuinely mean that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Good luck.
Wish us luck. Okay, now Penny, do I get it right, we're going to Hilton now?
Yes, that's the plan.
And that's on page 201, team?
And just a quick update on the hearing schedule, Glenn McCrath is on the list to be our next speaker, but Glenn is watching our live stream and knows we're running behind time, so he has agreed to speak later, more around sort of eleven forty. So after we've heard from Hilton, we'll move on to Rob Patterson.
Okay.
Okay, now, Hilton, I'm just going to push the buttons at this end, and that should give you the opportunity to speak. So Hilton, you are now in the meeting with us. If you can unmute your phone, you just need to push star six. Oh, you're ahead of the game, look at you go, we should now be able to hear you.
Yeah.
Hello, Hilton.
Good, thank you. Can you? Hello. Good morning, commissioners.
We're in your hands.
Thank you. My name is Hilton Rhodes. I'm seventy-six, a bachelor, and have lived for fifty years at twenty-four Tanna Street, Taronga, a dead-end street off Eighteenth Avenue. I have been both a Taronga District Councillor and a Taronga City Councillor. I now pay four thousand dollars per annum in rates. What do I get for my four thousand dollars per annum rates? Unfortunately, not a lot, as nothing has been done in Tanna Street, not even footpaths, and water rates are extra. I, the Taronga and Grayson libraries are bit, and also the free buses are bit. I have a BA English, Victoria University Wellington, as well as extra papers in economics, accounting, commercial law and economic history. I strongly oppose the resolutions of Taronga City Council's eight November two oh two one final proposed representation review. Rather, keep the status quo, leave as-is, four ward councillors and a majority of at-large councillors, and the rate payers continuing to have two votes, one for ward and one for at-large, a great system, as well as one for mayor. Unfortunately, the proposed eight ward only plus one Maori at-large plus mayor is a mighty backward step when compared with the current system. It is unbelievable that there was wide consultation and affirmation of the proposal just before Christmas last year. Most people, rate payers, don't even know if Taronga is going to have a local body elections or not this year. I was unaware of any wide consultation on the proposal. Surely, dear commissioners, no rational rate payer would endorse such a backward step in their democratic rights. Not only leave as-is the four ward councillors, but also increase the number of at-large councillors. Why? Because that's what we had in two thousand and four before the CEO Stephen Town interfered and knocked the thirteen councillors plus mayor down to eleven councillors plus mayor. I alone strongly objected. The current proposal further drops the number of elected councillors from eleven to eight plus one Maori at-large, nine, another, nine plus mayor. Whereas I had three votes, one at-large, one ward and one for mayor, I now only have two votes, ward and mayor, no third vote at-large. The eight ward candidates will be tempted to only look after issues in their own ward in order to be re-elected. In reality, I will only have access to my ward councillor, whereas most issues are citywide. Please keep as-is, the status quo, and increase the candidate numbers to what they were in two thousand and four, thirteen plus mayor. The four commissioners, Anne Tolly, Shadrick Rollaston, Bill Walsey, Stephen Selwood, and the CEO Marty Greenfield, have dismissed out of hand the very strong public demonstration protest of twenty-sixth July two thousand and one, where eighty protesters were allowed inside the chamber and a hundred and fifty-plus were charging outside the library downstairs. Moreover, it was a very cold and wet winter's day. Fewer councillors mean there will be less motive for people to seek office, another blow for democracy, and it will be more expensive for those who try. We need more elected councillors to rein in the overpaid, there are ninety staff members with safe jobs on over a hundred thousand per annum, underworked, they rely on consultants, arrogant, they never answer their telephones or get back with clear answers to simple questions, and totally incompetent. To quote or cite their incompetency, one, the multi-million dollar fiasco car park next to the library sold back to the developer for one dollar. Please check it out. Two, the totally unnecessary multi-million dollar Cameron Road upgrade and unnecessary cycle track. Why not just take the tolls off Route K it has been paid for years ago? And third growth in competency is the Cayman apartment block in Mongany Road, the Mount. Because TCC staff signed off on a shonky workmanship by classic builders, CBC, construction-owned by mega-developer Peter Cooney, the council is now up for millions in repair compensation. Please check it out also. The staff are also pushing and trying to sell off the Taronga Racecourse and Taronga Golf Course for housing development. Again, the staff tried to get rid of the Marine Park Reserve and Sulphur Point for a Manaya Mahuta, Tinuui Waikato University Building and Car Park, but was fortunately defeated after strong local protest opposition. On Friday twenty-fifth of February, I rang TCC, it is hard to get through, eventually asked the two, two short questions. One, why has the traffic island between Fraser Street and Grace Road on Fifteenth Avenue been removed? And two, could it please be restated?
Hilton, Hilton, do you mind? I just need to, I just need to hold you there. We're more interested in the democratic process of appointing representatives rather than those infrastructure-type issues, because they are really outside the realm of the commission. Can you just focus more back on, on the proposition put up, which is, as you've articulated, the ward elected system and your views on that? I don't want to go into the infrastructure stuff.
Well, I can't, it's all, you'll just have to bear me out, I've nearly finished. The news, I was told I would get back and answer within ten working days, I'm still waiting.
Okay, I can't fix that one for you.
It is the developers who, yeah, it is the developers who are overloading the central city infrastructure, yet it is us household rate payers who are paying for the enlargement, enlargements. Is it true, Commissioner Anne Tolly, that while she was an East Coast National MP, was a ball player in the closure of the...
Hold on, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Hilton.
...Gibson Napier Railway.
Hilton, this is, this is out of line, mate, honestly, can you just bring it back to what we're actually here for? Your views or not, I don't, that's out of, out of our realm.
Yeah, righto.
Are you done?
Uh, yeah, righto, about plenty of times, righto. Five, six, and just one final question. Is it a possibility that the Maori candidate will be Badi Makari at the next local election, whenever, whenever we have?
I've got no idea, mate.
That finishes it all? Thank you. Yeah, righto.
Thank you, I'll just check to see if there's any, any questions. There's one question from Sue.
Yes, Sue. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Rhodes, that was useful, interesting. What percentage of the total city council income is made up of rates? The rates take, what percentage of the total income does the rates take?
I know. I know that I pay four thousand dollars.
Okay. No, no, I understand that, no, no, I get that.
And Sue, Sue, it's going up twenty percent next year.
Yeah, no, similar problems, it's actually an international problem, we've got to look after our infrastructure.
Okay, okay, right.
Yes, but the developers should be paying for that, not me.
Okay, we've got that. Are there any other questions? Hilton, we're done. Thank you for the presentation and thank you for your observations.
That's okay, thank you for listening to me. God bless. Ciao.
My pleasure. Okay.
My pleasure.
Just while we're waiting to transition through to, I think it's Rob?
Correct.
Rob Patterson, just in the, just the only observation, or one of the observations that I've not made today, that, that we have generally done as we've gone through these hearings, especially to Anne and Stephen and Marty, this process occurred during COVID, interestingly. So the impact on local authorities, their ability to engage at the usual street corner, the evening hall, that hasn't been able to occur, and I want to make that acknowledgement, and I've made it to every review that we've done, that there have been challenges around how engagement has occurred. So councils have used all manner of technology. technology, uh, to, and they, and made the, and I'm going to say made their best endeavours uh, under the circumstances to engage. So I know there's criticism, uh, and it's not just yours, there's quite a lot um, around that level of engagement. But we do need to recognise that there was a an impact on our nation and on the planet, uh, that, that impeded, uh, what may have been, uh, what may have occurred, uh, in, in earlier times. Uh, it's not an excuse, it's just a reality.
Had a similar effect, of course, on residents. You know, it was two ways that, that, that problem, wasn't it? Isn't it?
Yeah, anyway, just make that acknowledgement. Right now. Uh, so page one eighty-nine, uh, team. Um, and Penny, you're getting Robin.
Yes, Rob has joined the meeting, um, and with a little bit of luck, Rob will unmute shortly. Uh, and if possible, turn video on, and then we should be away.
Good morning, Rob.
Good morning.
Nice to see you there. Look, I do apologise for the delay. Thanks for your indulgence.
No problem. Every day's a Sunday for me, so it's fine.
Fantastic. Right, we're in your hands.
Good. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Rob Patterson. I reside in Tauranga. And I am a T C C elector or voter. I've lived in the area for fifty-one years. That's Western Bay, Tauranga and the Mount, so I'm pretty familiar with what goes on. I lodged an appeal objection to Tauranga City Council Commissioner's final proposal. The nine councillors, made up of eight general ward councillors, one Maori ward councillor, and of course, an elected mayor. In total, that's ten elected members, which is one less than previously. I had no idea why that is supposed to be a good idea. I would have thought an increase rather than a decrease. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you at the Local Government Commissioner's hearing this appeal. Although it must be said, the format due to COVID, which you referred to, is not entirely a satisfactory environment to make presentations, particularly from an objectives perspective. A short notice of the hearing did not necessarily help, darling. I take it you will have read my submissions, objections dated fourth October, eighteen October, made to council, that were, they were to council, and my appeal to the Local Government Commission dated thirty for January. There's five pages there, I believe. And there may be some annexes there too. I reiterate and support all I have stated in those submissions, which fully cover my concerns and my proposals. In addition, I will later today evaluate a copy of my objection made twenty-eighth August, two fifteen to the two sixteen P C C review, when I appeared before the Local Government Commission relating to my written presentation made at the time, which I presumed Local Government Commission will still have a copy and file if it is relevant. Uh, I only refer to that because at that time, I strenuously opposed council wards requesting all council seats be at large, as I had done in the two thousand and ten review, and nothing in my view has changed. I still oppose wards. And in my view, my view is that all normal ordinary councillors should be elected at large. Wards are not, in my view, inclusive, and they're not particularly concerned with the city as a whole. Uh, Mr Duffy is correct, um, that this is not a common model that we're looking at here. And I doubt the council will review that model over the next six years. I would have no confidence they will do that. The current final council proposal of nine councillors, eight general wards plus one Maori ward, and an elected mayor has never, was never floated for public submissions, and the public feedback essentially supported option two, being nine at-large ward councillors, one Maori ward councillor and a mayor. Which was, as I understand, uh, it was also the council staff preference at that time. The current proposal arose in my opinion simply to address perceived issues that had arisen within regard to and to accommodate the Maori ward. This just looks like expediency, and this is unintended consequences of Miss Mahuta's legislation. Um, it's effectively winding back the clock up to a hundred years. I could reluctantly accept six councillors elected at large and four ward councillors, including the Maori ward and an elected mayor. No one I have spoken to supports or agrees with the current council final proposal. And to that end, I support all the objectors on the appeal today who have opposed the council's main final proposal. In particular, I generally support Barry Scott's very full submissions of ten December and today relating to this appeal, which you have just heard. Community boards, as stated, they should be set up, in my view, in four to five boards and, um, would cover off a wards issue. If you think there's a reason to have council wards, that would cover that to some degree. Um, if there were, if there was any indebted at a relatively small cost. This is what they call grassroots democracy and allows real public feedback and community involvement. The suggestion of it being a significant burden on rate payers cost-wise isn't true, in my opinion. I think the cost of these boards would be four to five hundred thousand dollars. That's not great in the overall context. Um, and there would of course be other costs, because you have council staff components setting them up. Councils have to have some input, so there's related costs. So I'm not trying to demean that, but I don't think there's significant in the overall part. So in that degree, I support what Barry has to say. Despite a written request I made last week, council refused to provide me with a copy of the T V, T C C presentation prior to the hearing, which was made this morning. Um, as if that was added nine a m when I last checked my computer, as they indicated they would. Why the secret sauce? This is certainly not open or transparent behaviour, and I ask what they were afraid of. The self-serving puffery we've heard from them is trying to justify what they've done. T C C already have seen our submissions on the appeal, so surely we should be able to look at what council has to say. Probably prepared by staff and criticise and comment thereon if appropriate, after having some time to assess this stuff. Um, I would also make the point that incidentally Commissioners Tolly and, um, Selwood don't live in Tauranga, as far as I'm aware. So do they have any real local knowledge of what goes on here? I am also concerned, T C C has been allocated thirty minutes and have taken over an hour for the opening time spot and a closing time of thirty minutes. That's a total of sixty minutes. In this case, it's far more now. When the rest of us get ten minutes each, that does not seem even-handed, balanced or fair to me. Um, I would take deliberately just to refer to my submissions very briefly. And there were some general considerations. One was on page two. Where I said Tauranga was struggling to cope with the problems that come with being the fastest growing major city in New Zealand. Yet here we are about to reduce the number of councillors. Frankly, it's not the answer, and I've referred to that previously. Minister Mahuta directed the commissioners, who are currently the council, to facilitate smooth transmission back to an elected council. The minister who directed commissioners to determine, and, or a mechanism engaging with community, e wean of stakeholders. And in my opinion, their attempts to date have failed abysmally. Clearly has, has got itself council in a tangle, getting around the effects of what it sees as an awkward situation with the establishment of the Maori ward. That is, they need to have five ward councillors, which in Tauranga's case can include a Maori ward councillor. Um, it is my feeling that the council was determined that general wards and Maori wards should be able to elect the same number of councillors. No more, no less than exactly an equal number. And they're prepared to fabricate some sort of system, no matter how flawed it is, to achieve that end. Um, in their haste to install the Maori ward, they didn't cross their eyes and felt their peace. That's the minister. And frankly, this council was not aware of the implications until it took advice from the Local Government Commission. After inquiries were made by some interested parties as to what the position was if they did that. The whole Maori ward concept was rushed into a thought, and this is why we've got this sort of problem that's arisen. Valued a set of accounts, the set about determining with open mind what would be fair and effective representation system for Tauranga is obvious. And whatever system is chosen, there should have been an uneven number around the council table. So it's to minimise the chances of decision-making being compromised by way of the mayor's casting vote. I also submit that council is essentially one complete community of interest, not a collection of miscellaneous bits and pieces, as can be the case with other, other cities. Summary, that, that's cherry picking what I said. It's not, it's not the full, but it's in the end, and I take it it's ready.
Yeah.
So in a nutshell, I want to see nine at-large councillors, one Maori ward councillor and one elected mayor. Not just electors having the right to vote for one ward councillor and a mayor. As I have said, I could possibly will the six at-large councillors, four ward councillors, including a Maori ward, the three others being possibly Mount Papamoa, Matauatai, Ote Motai areas, Welcome Bay, Lakes, Price Park, which is fairly similar to the present arrangements, but with only four against the six councillors that are on wards. And those wards with their boundaries, in my view, are misaligned anyway. Other cities that previously had wards have recently been given solely at-large representation, and that was so in two thousand and sixteen too. And community boards, so why not here in Tauranga? I also ask the commissioners to note that I am a chairperson of and also represent Citizens Advocacy Tauranga Incorporated, CAT, a community group which endorses and supports what I have submitted here. And they seek to look after, um, citizens' interests in Tauranga and have for a number of years, from about two thousand and seven. That concludes my brief address. Thank you for hearing me. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have if I can. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Rob. Um, I'll just pick you up on, on one point there in terms of the amount of time, um, allocated. Um, I think you can see, and I hope you would acknowledge, that we have been incredibly flexible and in making sure everybody gets a fair go. So if you go back and look through any of the other hearings right across the country, we've given everybody a fair chance. Um, and if you see, I think we're an hour behind schedule so far, so, um, I wouldn't mind you just acknowledging that. Everybody's getting a fair go here.
But that's not my fault. I'm, I'm stuck to time, I think. I, I stuck on my time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Sue has a question.
Um, thanks. Um, thanks, Rob. That's very helpful. Can, can we just go back? You suggested six at-large. Um, three, three general wards and one Maori ward. Have I got that right?
That's what I'm suggesting.
Yep, good. No, no, I've got a question then. I just, what would be the three general wards? I think you went through quite quickly where you suggested they cover. So what were those areas? What were the three wards?
Well, the three wards I would look at would encompass Matauatai,
Hang on, I can't write that fast.
Okay.
Fortunately, I know how to spell them, but that, yeah.
Bethlehem and the early avenues.
And early Avs, yeah. Okay, next.
Welcome Bay, that's the second one, Welcome Bay, Lakes and Price Park.
Sorry, and Price Park?
Price Park.
And what was the other? Lakes?
Uh, the lakes. They call it the lakes. That's, that's the suburb they generally have a name for.
Oh. And the last one was Papamoa and the Mount?
Papamoa, which is an existing ward at the moment.
And the Mount presumably, including the Mount.
Yes.
Yeah.
But they all have two representatives virtually at the moment, under what you would call Mount, Welcome Bay and probably Ote Motai Matauatai. They're, they're wards. They have two representatives at the moment.
Yeah, I'm on to that. And just one last question associated with all that. Um, so you, you're happy with single ward, uh, single council awards?
Yep. I don't want, I don't want any wards at all, but if you've got to have one, put one in there if you want it. They can handle it.
Yeah, well, we need you if we, yeah, cool. Okay, thank you very much. That's very helpful.
Okay, uh, just checking with, uh, gosh, I'm losing sight. Where's, oh, there's Benita.
Good morning, Rob. Thank you for your time today and thank you for keeping to time. I do appreciate your efforts here. Um, and apologise that, you know, I haven't been able to do the same, but I just have a question. You made a comment around Tauranga City and your preference being, uh, voted in the at-large. The elected members, um, and you talked about Tauranga City being one community of interest. But I'm just interested in, in reflecting on this. Uh, you know, when you've got, um, uh, a community like Maryvale with a school with a Desir One, as opposed to some of the Desir Nine schools in your city. So how, how can you reconcile their being, uh, one community of interest with such disparate um, abilities to participate across the city?
Well, exactly. It means that, that is one area where you may not have a direct community interest. But Maryvale would still be incorporated, say, to some degree in the Gretan area, uh, would be almost into my area, Ote Motai, uh, sorry, um, Oheiti. So I don't think they're left out. That may be a bit more of a social problem. That, that could be right. You could have a social problem there, uh, because it might be Desir One. I, I've never seen that, but that, that would certainly be so in, in most cities, I guess, anyway. It would be, it could be the case in Arataki even, over the other side, over the Mount, where we've had a place and lived there. I don't think anyone's regarded them as being, having leprosy or anything, you know, it's just, it's the way of it. But the community of such are all fairly close. Basically, except for the expansion it had down to Papamoa, which is quite a way down now. Most of the areas in Tauranga would be within about fifteen minutes of the centre of the city. That's pretty close. So that's what I mean by community of interest. The city's reasonably close. It's not spread out like Auckland, coming from something like Orywa, out of Pukiko.
Okay, so just to
They have no community of interest at all.
Sure, but just to clarify then, you're talking about a community of interest being geographic rather than socio-economic or, um, ethnic?
Because there's, there's, there's never going to be a community of interest in that respect. You're going to get your remurs, you're going to get your, that, that's just a fact of life, and probably most of us don't live in either of those areas, you know.
So how the, how then do we ensure that the, everyone in Orata has the same amount, uh, ability to participate as those in the Rima Wira, considering all of the social issues that you're also talking about? Because that's what we're, that's, I'm just trying to get to down effective representation rather than
I think we can reach out to all of them. We can't make them participate. That is the problem. Uh, New Zealand is an apathetic society, likely or not, and they shouldn't be. Everyone should be out there participating. I know some people are more capable of doing that than others, but you, all you can do is invite them. If they tell me you don't want to know, there's nothing you can do about it. You can't force them.
Very true. We've seen that recently. Thank you, Rob.
Okay, Rob, I think we've given that a pretty good go. We've had a couple of questions there. So thank you very much for your, um, effort and your presentation, um, and wish us well in our deliberations.
Okay, yeah, thank you for hearing me.
Cheers, Rob. Thank you. We're going to Glen now, Penny? Is that correct? You're on mute now. It's all right.
It's bound to happen at some point, Brendan. Sorry about that.
Is it Glen?
We, uh, no, it's, um, John.
John?
Yes.
Okay, um, page two oh five, team.
And, and John, I'll just click the button at this end and hopefully bring you into the meeting. Lovely, John, you are in the meeting with us now. If you unmute yourself and pop your video on, we should be good to go.
Good morning, John. Are you able to get rid of the mute button? Great. Uh, you've been observing for quite some time, so you've got a pretty good sense of what's happening. Appreciate, appreciate your understanding. Um, we're over to you.
We'll just get ourselves in the middle of the screen here, guys. Uh, look, thank you for this morning and, and a more end to everyone, Penny, to Janie, to Benita, to Sue, to Donald, to E J. Um, to yourself, Brendan, obviously as chair, and to my five colleagues at Tauranga City Council. Obviously, I can see Anne and Stephen, Marty out of shot, Coral out of shot, and let's not forget Robin, without whom the whole thing would fall down, I'm sure. Um, you've given us the usual assurance of the chair, Brendan, that everyone's read everything. So I'm going to take you and the commission at their word. Um, often I'll start a situation like this by saying, given you've read it and given what it wasn't quite Barry's magnum opus. It was a few pages, particularly when you included the preceding submission I made. Do you have any questions on the basis of what you've read? So we can clarify those quickly. If not, I'll proceed to make some additional points, reinforce some points.
Okay, we're just holding. I'll just check with commissioners, my team, to see if there's anything that you want to fire in with now. Uh, one, two, three, just bear with me. I'm just checking my notes here. All my notes. Um, again, a circle to observe what you say next, so. Now, I'm going to leave it for you to summarise and then we'll see where that lands.
Thank you. I'll, forgive me, Benita, but I'll skip the Mihi and Pepeha because I'm short of time. Some of my colleagues at council will be able to inform you or fill you in if you feel that's required. I am, though, interesting enough, a resident of Tooriko, which for those people with no local knowledge is not a local Maori place, but it's an abbreviation of Toorongo Rimu company, and for some reason the C was changed to a K. Although I'm a resident of Tooriko, under the proposal put forward, I would actually not be voting in the Tooriko ward, I would be voting in the Bethlehem ward, which leads me to reinforce point number one. The allocation and division into wards and ward names is unusual, slightly inchoate, and doesn't align with what a lot of people understand where they live. Now, I think we need to, and council went to some pains to contextualise the situation in Toorongo, and you have some familiarity with it. There's obviously significant debates still happening about whether we will be having elections this year, next year, or indeed in 2025, and people have different views on that. And I think that goes to a key point. As former and late councillor Gal MacIntosh said, there's nothing unique about Toorongo. We are a diverse city of some 150,000 plus people with many, many voices, many, many groups, many, many ideologies, many, many viewpoints, all seeking, of course, to influence the alignment and future direction of the city. And when it comes to an election, as Forrest Gump would have said if he'd been asked, democracy is like a box of chocolates. You get an interesting assortment out of the process. It's interesting that in the last election, we got circa 40% of the people voted, which is significantly more than we had input into the representation review, significantly I fear that some of the contextualisation of the current representation review is akin to that old proverb about generals fighting the previous war. In other words, what people are trying to do is to put something in place to address the results or the perceived results of the previous election. And I think Gregory Brownler spoke to that, that he as a mayor had four unsuccessful mayoral candidates to deal with and dealt with that reasonably well in some respects. And I was one of those candidates. By the way, I am the only current councillor, I think, presenting to this review, one of the few current councillors that presented to the long-term plan. I maintain an active interest in the present and future of the city. I think, Brendan, when you introduced, you talked about the unique situation of doing this in the light of a government commission being in place, and you made reference to a sort of a pure situation and the principles. And I suppose that's really the key point I'd like to make. The key point I'd like to make is if one looks at Section 10 Local Government Act Democratic, if you look at the ideal, and this has been reinforced by previous local government commission decisions, where they have overthrown recommendations from councils, the ideal is single transferable vote, which by the way means you only get one vote, the word, the key is in the word "single", single transferable vote, and multi-member constituencies of some shape or form. And that's sort of the essence of where I've gone, and we've gone the opposite of that. The proposal is the opposite of that, and I think that's a fundamental, if you like, principled position that I take issue with. I think one of the challenges, if one looks at the previous council, was in fact the diversity on council. You had, for the first time that I can remember, two people that I think voted green, me being one of them. And for those of you who know local politics, this is a bluer town as you just about find in New Zealand, certainly one of the bluest metros. There was significant diversity of political viewpoint. If we actually extended the at-large franchise, I was an at-large councillor, I've always seen Toorongo as it's the fifth smallest by area local government authority. If you sort of extended the at-large franchise at the last election, all things being equal, which of course they never are, Josh Tikani, a young rangatahi, an up-and-coming kumatu in some senses, would have been elected as an at-large councillor in Toorongo. But unfortunately, we cut off at four at-large. He was sixth. That election in 2019 was the first election we had under STV, and it gave us a range of voices around the table, for which a, an experienced mayor, and you know, some of you have experience in that role, an experienced mayor would have relished the challenge and I believe would have brought together an enormously powerful team. Unfortunately, the election didn't bless us as a city with an experienced mayor, indeed someone with no real governance experience whatsoever. It was most unfortunate. But it is what it is. We are where we are, and now we're looking forward. I think we've got to avoid falling into the trap of fighting the previous war. I think we've got to look forward in a pure and principled way and look at how we get real diversity around the table. We know what the theory and evidence supports, and that is multi-member wards under STV. Everyone in the local government commission is aware of that verifiable evidence-based fact, and I would urge you to be consistent with your previous decisions and not get sort of buy-in to the morass of recent history, which was, as someone who was there, not particularly pleasant and not particularly productive. Although saying that, it is fair to say that on the basis of the advice that I received from Russell McVeigh, on the basis of that advice, there was no substantive failure by the previous council. You weren't in an ECAN or a Kuiper situation, which makes the Toorongo's current situation even more unusual. Although it is fair to say there was significant disquiet at the behaviour around the council table, and in that sense, there was, you know, a risk of loss of confidence. That could have been addressed, in my view, by chucking a crown manager and would have been a good idea at some point, or at least a crown observer. So I suppose that's my point. If we look at this as going forward, if we look at this on a principle basis, if we look at this on the basis of evidence, then multi-member wards under STV will give us the diversity of voices we need around the table. And with regard to a particular point, couple of points that have been made, Benita, you referenced the Tōkabul, that famous phrase, the tyranny of the majority. I think the provisions that need to be made, Maori ward is a decision that was made while I was on council. Transparency, I voted against it, but it was a decision made while I was on council. It's not a problem. It addresses one thing, but I would like to see more than one Maori candidate on council. If we're going to have a Maori ward member, I would like to see more than one, because I, from my experience, talking to local hapu, talking to members of the three local iwi here, the idea that there is a single Ka'au Maori or Maori voice or perspective here, you talk to young rangatahi, they have a real view on whether they are being represented adequately in some of the discussions around the table. And that's true of so many groups. The idea that Toorongo becomes a major outlier in terms of every other metro in these tiny little geographic wards, right, and that geography somehow represents this community and gives its diversity, it's just not true. We have diversity in terms of ethnicity, socio-economic groups, you talked about those disparities. Benita, again, I've already revealed my politics, you can figure out where I sit on that. Women has been an issue for us in terms of getting representation. And then you have, one of my personal passions is sustainability, and Barry alluded to the whole climate change thing. Our long-term plan made effectively no mention of climate change or sustainability. None, almost none. It's a joke. In 2022, and I support, by the way, the lawyers for climate change who are currently taking on central government, that fiasco, let's not get too dogged, but my point is there is significant diversity, but it doesn't sit around geography in Toorongo. We're too small to be divided geographically. We need diversity of voices around the council table, and if there's more voices we need, then put, stick with the current structure, but put three candidates in every ward, not two. Let's see if that brings up the Maori vote, so we get two people in the Maori ward, I don't know how the numbers work, and let's have six at-large, increase them by 50% as well. And that would have put Josh Tikani in an other zone, right, at-large, young Maori, unfortunately male, but hey, look, you know, I'll leave it to Josh to see whether he's prepared to undergo the surgery to address that failing. Young Maori male on council would have been awesome. And then there's the other point that's been made, you know, why go back in the number of councillors, given we are so much larger than we were before, and the job of getting around all those voices is enormous? And I go on record, I have never turned down an invitation to meet, to speak with, and more importantly, to listen to anybody in my three partial terms on council.
Okay.
So thank you.
Thank you, John. Sue's got a question.
Thanks, Brendan. Thanks, John. A couple of questions. I didn't have, I've never had a classical education in the European sense, anyway. And I can't even pronounce it. Baribus that you've mentioned in your reasons for proposal, you're discussing the efficient governance question.
All things being, all things being equal. But of course, we know in life that generally speaking, everything has nuance, another wonderful French word.
Certainly, yes, I know that. When you say three councillors per ward, how many wards?
At the moment, at the moment, there are three wards. One is down the eastern seaboard, one is the western, one's through the centre.
I thought, I got confused. So you're talking about maintain, you're saying?
Yeah, what I said is stick with the current.
Yeah.
But to get more diversity, go from two councillors per ward to three councillors per ward.
Yep.
I think that would be good. And then go prorata, go from four at-large councillors to six, again, two to three, four to six, keep the ratios the same, and that would have put, that would have put Josh Tikani on the basis of the STV, yeah, voting system in 2019, that would have put him on council. And it would have been amazing.
And that'd be two Maori ward councils?
I don't know how the numbers would work. Someone would have to do those calculations.
And just with your comments about the smaller groups make better quality decisions.
Ah, yes.
Is it, is there any evidence about how big the group has to be to encourage group thing?
Yeah, and here I make the point, so my background, just to do a little bit of background, so I trained as a management, University of Waikato alumni, management consultant, started work at the age of 28 and retired in 2000 at the age of 41 as a management consultant. So I'm between retiring from professional work and collecting a pension, I'm in that space, and I've been there for now 22 years. It's a nice space to be in. I have experience since I've studied politics, I've studied management, I was on my first board, and I mean a proper board, someone else's money, external investors, before I reached 40, well before I reached 40, my mid-30s.
Yeah, but moving on to.
The general, no, but the general thinking is, in that context, the argument for smaller boards, five, six, seven, optimum group making makes sense. But the point that I make to people is that while, and I'm going to use a word that was used before and caused a lot of problems in New Zealand, that while in some ways a council is akin to a board, akin to a partnership, one akin to a board, it is not a board, and representation is absolutely critical, which is why, although I talk about the small number argument, my preference would be for a greater number of people. That does require, however, a bigger skill set from a mayor. What you don't want to do ideally is to avoid the situation where you get an A-team and a B-team, and you get a significant number of people who are excluded from the process. And that's to a certain extent what happened last council, when the mayor got in, people who had stood against him were, and he divided the council. He was unanimously centred by that council within 12 months of getting elected.
And you discuss that format, that issue about complicated complexity and so on, you discuss it at some length and you've.
So it's the representation side says more numbers.
Yeah.
We are not a board, we are a council.
I've got the message clearly. Brilliant. Thank you very much, John.
Janie?
I just, a question for Anne and Stephen in their right of reply. How with your community did you engage in finding out those substantial communities of interest?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, John, thanks very much for the effort that you put into, obviously, the earlier presentations, and thanks for the summary today. It's been good engagement.
Thank you very much. And listen, good luck. I think Barry made the phrase gordian night. It's a tough call, and there are some strong arguments. And just one last point, I'd like to congratulate the commissioners on holding strong on the differential in terms of getting that commercial rates revenue up. Well done. Keep up the good work. You've just got to sort out the bloody developers. Thank you.
We're talking about taking full advantage of the opportunity.
Not my first rodeo, Brendan.
I got that. Well done, John. Thank you. I'm completely lost now. Where's Penny? Penny, help me. Where are we?
So we are just about to hear from Glen.
Right, and am I assuming that Ross has not come on board yet?
Yeah, that's right. And unfortunately, I don't have any contact details, like a phone number or anything for Ross to get in touch. So we've passed what was his originally scheduled time, he hasn't joined the meeting, so I'm expecting we won't see him.
Okay, we're going back to page 139.
And I'm just bringing Glen into the meeting now. Okay, Glen, it looks like you've joined the meeting. Looks like you're no longer muted, so hopefully we'll be able to hear you. Oh, no, maybe you are. Here we go, we can see you now, Glen, and perfect.
Kia ora, Glen. You've been observing for probably way too long, you'd suggest, but thanks for your indulgence. We've got you set up, ready to go now, so we're looking forward for a summary of all the observations that have been made. Commissioners have got it all in front of us, so we're in your hands.
Thank you very much, Brendan, and kia ora. Actually, it was a very interesting morning after I got out of my earlier meeting and joined in initially on the YouTube, so no need to apologise. I guess, just to say where I'm from, I grew up, was born and bred here, and like a lot of people came back to live here. And I'm here today representing the Sustainable But Plenty Charitable Trust, and there has been a past history where myself and one of the other trustees have been involved in the Sustainable Business Network and other sustainability organisations, and there are, yeah, a diverse background there. So I guess we're coming at this through that sustainability lens, but understanding that the work you do and the whole issue of democracy in a modern society is critical to getting good sustainability outcomes. So I guess I'll do a brief summary, respond to a few of the comments from the commissioners, and then hopefully leave some time for any questions. So we obviously support multi-member constituencies in the context of STV. We definitely want to see more diversity, and we think we see that under the STV system, even here in Taonga and in other cities. And as John Robson just said, there's potential, depending on where you finally sit on, on the number of at-large and so forth, that there's potential for that to come through, not just the Maori ward, but through the bigger part of the system. We strongly support the regional councils' view that the proposed system, that it doesn't support participative democracy. And I'm just going to read, they say that an at-large structure provided a better chance of the best people for the job being elected, and that it was critical that councillors worked collaboratively. So we're in that space too, and we think that the STV system really only works well with the multi-member wards and/or at-large. So whilst we support Commissioner Tolly's view that it'd be good to have more diversity, and we don't hear a lot of argument against that, we just don't see how those single-member wards are going to do that. We know the intention seems to be there from the council. We know the intention seems to be there from the council, but the evidence to support it is not there. Um, so we support fewer large awards, we've put forward options that we think. Um, and we are aware that unlike Rosalua Council and others that sort of put out, um, I would say more informative material for the residents to, to try to understand um, the, the details around incorporating a Maori ward. Our view is that the material from Taronga City Council was not up to, to that standard. And so there was a lot of confusion, um, that took place at the time of the consultation. And also touching on a point that I think you made, Brendan, that in the context of COVID, the initial survey that took place, as it was called, took place before the August lockdown last year. Whereas the official, you know, submission period took place when people were still reeling from that lockdown and from the, you know, the alert levels and so on. So I think there's a, there's a case to be made that it was, you know, tough for everyone, council and community, but that it was particularly important in that context to look at the initial survey and to understand that while technically the obligation was just to respond to the, um, to the submissions, that in the context, it seems only fair to factor in the, the period when far more people would have had a, you know, a fear ago at giving their views. And in that survey, um, you know, it's, it's very clear what people wanted. Um, that, let me just, I was pull up the point, so I was going to share that, according to the council's figures, it's interesting to see that fifty-six percent of the responses to that survey were actually eighteen to sixty-four-year-olds. So yes, forty-four percent were sixty-five plus. But I would argue that twenty-seven percent of the adult population is sixty-five plus, and that it's not at all unusual to have a higher representation for any council engagement to be in the sixty-five age group. I'm sure that most of you know that, and rightly or wrongly, that's just the way it is. And I think in a way, um, you know, we just have to accept that because there is the fact that the people who are sixty-five plus, who are retired, often have the time to put thoughtful commentary around some of these issues. And, um, and I, I'd go as far as to say that there tends to be a bit of a streak of ageism that runs through some of these kind of analyses around, um, around engagement processes where a lot of elders and Kumatu put forward their views. And it's now become sort of a bit unfashionable to want to listen to the, to the elders in our community. And I would sort of say that, um, you know, if I had a choice between listening to someone, you know, thoughtful submission from someone like Barry Scott, and then compare that to what I would have done at age twenty, you know, I don't think there's a problem having that, that number of years. And, and I think, you know, he's already addressed some other issues around the diversity of those people aged sixty-five plus. Um, I think the, um, a, another point was, in, in terms of the actual results of that survey, the council data shows sixty-four percent want, wanted at-large or something like the current mix of at-large and multi-member wards out of those who chose an option, whereas only nineteen percent supported ward only. Um, and of course, that ward only was not accompanied, like it was with other councils have chosen Maori wards, with an explanation for why it may not be inequitable to have a different number of councillors in a, an award that is a general ward to a, to a Maori ward. So there are arguments that, that cut both ways on that. And, and I think, um, so I would say, you know, you can take it that at the very least, we're saying two-thirds of the people in Taronga roughly were very clear on what they wanted in that survey. And the, the much smaller number who responded in the submission process, um, I don't think gives this clearer indication around that. Um, just sort of want to skip through a few things. Um, yeah, I think the, um, the, the other thing is, is that, um, when, when it comes to the boundary issue, I'm just addressing that, that, that to me, the logical conclusion, after hearing all the different perspectives on it and, and hearing what the commissioner said today, is that they're struggling to try to retrofit communities of interest onto population-based boundaries. And that, and that probably doing a good job within that context of putting a case for it. But having grown up here and knowing people who live here who, who, you know, have given personal feedback, and I'm talking, you know, hundreds of people who, who I've talked to, because it's, it's a big issue, um, for some of us, that, you know, it's, it's clear to me that at the very least, these are not the only ways to look at communities of interest, and they're quite problematic. So I think, um, that, that the view that, um, was, was raised there, um, I think Benita, you raised the, the comment around communities of interest. And I think, you know, from my perspective, that, that you have to look at, in the Taronga context, that those communities, especially from a sustainability type perspective, with looking at socio-economic issues, looking at transport, looking at, um, a whole range of different things, that, that you can just look at, yeah, just look, look at all the data that's there to back it up with. Um, transport, for instance, and where people move around, um, looking at where the, the poverty areas are, where the wealthy areas are. And you can say that there is not, uh, any clear communities of interest that come through from the, the chosen wards. But what there is, is that if you have general, um, either larger multi-member general wards or and/or at-large wards, sorry, at-large councillors, that you could get more diversity that represents those views. And it, as a practical example, under STV at the last election, a councillor was chosen, councillor Hughes, who, um, who I know the situation quite well, and she has, um, I guess you would say sort of a environmental sustainability focus. Now, I think it's highly likely that she would not have got in, um, if you had had the, the current, sorry, the proposed system, uh, because you would have had, um, people who were prominent in, in the local business community or others who would be striving to get in for one, one local ward position. And so you would miss that kind of representation. Now, I'm not arguing for the individuals and whether any particular individual should or shouldn't be there, but the principle behind it, I think, is, is flawed, and that you need to look much more widely than just geographic, um, areas of interest. But if you do look geographically, you have to pick the right level of geography. And in a tiny city like Taronga, geographically, it seems incredibly flawed to just cut it up into such tiny little wards with such low levels of population, and then try to say that these are communities of interest. I think it's far better under the three or four model that we're putting forward, um, to, to do that. Um, and I'll just quickly check, um, one other. I think I'll, I'll leave it there and, yeah, happy to answer any questions. I, I guess we're, we're just particularly interested in, um, in ensuring that, that the diversity of thought is there and that it's, this is not something that is just pushed through as a short-term fix for a perceived, um, you know, I suppose you'd say, trouble-making councillors to try to, to sort of upset the balance of the council. We think the reality is the city does have diversity of views, those councillors did represent that, and with the right structure and right leadership, that you can actually have good outcomes in spite of that, and in fact, because of that.
So Glenn, I'm going to ask the, the, the guts of the question here. So you've just made that observation, it's a tiny city. Can you, can you help me to understand how under the model proposed, where there are nine individuals elected across the city, how they, are you suggesting they can't come together as a team like any team at all and work in the best interests of the city?
No, I don't think it's, it's black and white like that. I, I mean, I definitely don't say they can't, um, but I.
So what's, what's, yeah, I'm trying to get the, get my head around, you know, what is it? We've heard from so many people that this is not right, this is not right. But I'm also hearing very strongly that, um, you know, you're a, you're a tight-knit community, you're a small geographical area. Um, your, your words, tiny city, and I'm struggling now, as we get to the end of the, um, appellant's observations, to understand what it, what, what is it that suggests that those people won't work together? Because that's the guts of what's being said.
Yep.
So what is it? Tell me what it is that says they won't.
That is the crux of the issue, though, if, if I may say that, that.
Yeah.
That, that is potentially a factor, but, but I think the crux of it is, will you get the appropriate representation for a city of this size and diversity? And I think the problem I see is that, that you might get a much more homogeneous, putting it simply, a white.
Okay, a small technical problem at the crucial point.
It looks quite big to me.
Pardon me?
The problem looked a bit big, actually.
We'll just give Glenn a chance to see if he can get back on.
He's certainly, Brendan, just so you know, he hasn't dropped out of the meeting as such, so his, um, uh, uh, connection may still come good. You never know.
Right.
Now he's dropped out of the meeting.
Damn. Um.
Often you've got to drop out to drop in again, that's what I find.
Yeah.
Um, Brendan, can I just interrupt while we have a moment of wonder and just make one last sort of logistical point? Um, for anybody who happens to have a copy of the speakers list for our hearing today. Um, there was one other speaker, Barbara, who was in our schedule. Um, Barbara let us know yesterday that she wouldn't be able to make her speaking time today. And I know I told, um, you that earlier today, but I just wanted other people broader to know that we hadn't missed Barbara. Um, she had not been able to come along.
Yep, that's good. That's, that's great.
Um, and no, no sign of Glenn rejoining at this point.
Okay. Um, what's?
There we go.
Welcome back, Glenn. That was a real shame, right at the crucial moment there.
Um, I apologize. I, I'd like to blame Microsoft, but I think it was possibly me not having done an update before. So I, um, shall I leak back in or not?
Can we re, re, rewind and leak back in if you don't mind? Yeah.
Certainly, and I, yeah, big apologies. I, um, yeah, I.
It's fine.
Surprised by my computer on that occasion. Um, so, um, yeah, I think what I was saying is, is that I, I think what could happen is you could have a more homogeneous, um, or more generous, whatever the right word is, um, mix of councillors. And putting it simply, there could be a tendency to what we've had in the past, when we've had ward only, which is older white men, and that we would have less diversity, certainly less diversity than, um, was on the council at the last election. And I think it's one thing to have people coming together, but if you have people coming together going in a direction around sort of the least common denominator, I don't think that's the way a modern democracy works best. I think it's complex, and you need good governance, and you need diversity of views. And the best way to do that is to have a mix of at-large and multi-member wards.
Okay, so in the writer reply, can you give us the rundown, the older white men from last time round? I, I need to, I just need to see that, because I'm quite challenged at the minute. Um, if you just pick that up for us, we're going to go to Benita, please.
Kia ora, Glenn, thank you for your time today. Really appreciate it. And that's a beautiful backdrop, by the way. I'm assuming it's somewhere there in the bay. Um.
Yeah, I've got to say, I do some work for Tourism Bad Plenty, and it's one of theirs, so I thought I'd show it off.
I'm working today, definitely. Um, I just noted in the submission that you also touched on community boards, although you haven't covered that today. And just rather probably asking council to look at in their write-off reply, um, some of the deeper uh, considerations that were made and not deciding to go with community boards this time around. I know that the issues of cost had been talked about, and the reflection that the single member ward system was the belief that, that would, you know, really get into the communities and enable that engagement. Can we just have a bit of a, more of an understanding of what else was considered in the decision not to have community boards brought forward at this stage? Just noting that, um, at least three of our submitters this morning have referenced the power of community boards and, and how that might, um, enable effective and fair representation better. Thank you. Thank you, Glenn. Wasn't really a comment for you.
Am I, Brendan, am I able to just give a quick response, even though that wasn't directed at me, just for one quick comment?
Please do on the community board, yes.
Yeah, I, I think, um, in a way, there's a danger that the argument could be run both ways, because I'm, I'm not saying, you know, you have to put in community boards this time. I think there are arguments for and against. But I do support community boards, um, at some point in, in, in the future. But I think the danger is that you say, uh, on the one hand, they, if you have single member wards, small single member wards, you will sort of not need the community boards, because they're very community-oriented councillors. But on the other hand, you're saying that single member wards won't lead to a lack of cross-the-city thinking. And, um, and you don't have to worry about people, um, taking on the interests of those who vote them in in their community. And I, I personally think that that's, well, I don't know if it's naive or just hopeful, but I, I think the reality is that when people are in wards and people vote them in, that there is, um, you know, rightly or wrongly, that those, um, people on the council will factor in their constituents in that ward very strongly in the decisions and often at the expense of the bigger picture for the city.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Sue? Sue?
Um, thank you, thank you, Brendan. Um, and just echoing my colleagues, thanks, Glenn, for your, um, your submission. Um, a couple of questions. Uh, I've just got the impression from the submissions and the whole process that there's a, um, significant number of residents slash citizens groups in Taronga. But I mean, can you describe that kind of summer, a summary of, of community groupings and activity in the, particularly in the local government sphere?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. Um, I, I think it's a bit of a hodgepodge myself. I think that there are certain areas where there is, um, so that there are strong resident and ratepayer groups. So they are Mount Manganui, Arataki and Papama, so that eastern, what's currently in, in the ward and that goes along the eastern coastline. And they have, um, two, plus they have two council-provided, um, community facilities with community centres that communities can use. And there are all sorts of sports facilities and recreational, so they, they are well provided for in a relative sense compared to some other communities. Um, there's also a, a couple of small community centres, um, and, um, well, one of them particularly a socially deprived area in Mirribau, and another in a, you know, somewhat, um, deprived area of Wharren Bay. And there are, um, a couple of other residence groups which are, um, in more focused areas, the, the lakes, which, um, yeah, really is a suburb name. And, um, and this one in Matua, which is a very wealthy area. Um, and then there's also one in, um, in the avenue. So what tends to happen is that overall, the, the resident ratepayer groups are in the, you know, putting it very simplistically, and the predominantly sort of well-off areas might be, you know, without meaning to disparage one of them, um, you know, on the whole, that tends to be a tendency. The community centres, probably, you know, two or three that exist, I tend to be in the less, um, well-off areas. But they don't have an official way of having their views represented, um, they're just a gathering point in the community. And then there, of course, there are all the many, you know, it's like any city, all the different, um, other communities of interest. And some of those are quite strong, particularly around carbon reduction and sustainability and environmental, that sort of area. Um, but not so much in terms of the, the interface with council, there's sort of a bit of a gap there uh, in terms of a structural connection between those community groups and the council itself.
Another question, Sue?
Now I've got, well, as for the council.
Yep.
Um, in terms of, um, the current arrangements, um, I don't, I don't think that we've got an indication of whether that's practicable, given the current, um, uh, population. And if, if not, is, is. And if not, is there another way you could cut the cake, as it were?
But I'm not clear. What's the question?
Well, the sustainability Tarong is saying, look, what we think you should be doing is, sorry, sustainability Bay of Plenty, is what you should be doing is at-large and then general and Maori ward.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering that if if it was only general wards or at-large and general wards, a smart award. In terms of the fair representation criteria, how could that?
How does that stack up? Yeah, yeah, okay.
And I'd rather they told us than we try and figure it out later.
Right out. Okay.
Thanks again, Glenn.
Is that, no, that's fine. Anne, have you got the guts for that?
Yeah, sorry, yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. All right. So Glenn, thanks for the presentation. Thanks for the effort and certainly the quality of the sustainable Bay of Plenty presentation was very easy to read. So well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And apologies again for dropping out for a while there. Yeah, I'll join the others in wishing you good luck, but I'm sure it's more than luck. So good.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a suspicion that we've made it, Penny.
You are correct. You have heard from the list of submitters that you had. We're done.
Right. Okay. And so now we've got, we've just got five minutes before the writer reply, according to my schedule. We're going to take a break. Sorry, Anne. So look, as is usual, you're one of the family of local authorities who have no ability to keep the time. And so we're about an hour behind schedule. And I think that's actually very good for the amount of information that's come through today. So I'm not at all uncomfortable. We do need a break. And, I mean, can we come back at one o'clock? Is twenty-five minutes too short a time? Or do you want to hold out till?
It is a bit short for us, Brendan. We've got quite a lot that we have to.
So we'll give you an hour, come back at one thirty?
An hour would be really good. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just whatever you guys feel comfortable with.
Yeah. Can I just clarify Sue's last question?
I'm not, I don't think I was very clear. Sorry about that. That's submitted, some submitters have said, look, current arrangements, that is, three wards. And then others have said, three wards plus an at-large. I'm wondering in terms of the general wards distribution, whether that's practicable, given population growth, you know, the boffins. Thanks very much.
And does it meet, and does it meet the criteria as well?
Does it meet the criteria? Yeah.
Yeah, that's the critical thing. Yeah. Can it actually be done?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Just let yourself and the panel know, I have to catch a flight, so we'll have to leave at the latest at quarter to two. So I hope to be able to join you at one thirty, but may have to leave.
Understand, Stephen. Completely understand. And that's the flexibility that we just have to have. So appreciate that. Okay, so Penny, we're going to adjourn till one thirty. You'll give us the instructions, same as last time, I think.
You're on the money. It is the same as last time. The live stream will continue to run throughout the duration of the break. So if you can please put yourselves on mute, turn off your videos, and I'll just pop a slide up for anyone that's watching our live stream to let me know that we're taking a break.
Okay, and for commissioners, we'll do a quick ring in now and then get our lunch. Okay.
Pete, let's have, oh, let's have something on toast, could you?
Janey.
So we can hear you.
Toast, that'd be nice.
It was going to be dumplings.
Hello. How we going, Penny?
We're going good, I think. I'd speak to some other people who'll join us in the not-too-distant future. And we'll be live.
I think I can comfortably say I'm the only person in Takaka wearing a tie on the main street.
That's what to get for having a life.
Ah, those guys are so chilled out, it's fantastic. Grant says hello, came across him on the street.
Nice. You'll be the only one wearing a tie and shoes.
Hey, 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 we're still live streaming and we have people here and we've got attendees and everything.
Modest banter, Penny.
Modest.
Right, so we need to re- so Stephen's got to get away, so we'll make sure we kick off sharply.
Don't worry about the chat, Brendan.
It's interesting, I can't read it. Gobbledygook.
I just have to open up the PowerPoint. Go on, Brendan, we've got reinforcements.
Really? Fantastic.
Yeah. We've just got a couple of pictures to show you. Well, sorry.
Righto, okay.
So now I've got the list that you sent through.
Yes, fantastic.
The KJ sent through, so if we work with that.
Yes. And if that works around Stephen for him to chime in before he has to get away, then that's absolutely fine. So you can juggle around, so. Okay, so we've got everybody back on.
One moment.
Penny? Are we all good? One, two, three.
Yes, we are.
Yes, right. Show, we're in your hands now.
So just the efforts underway, I think it was Sue's question about some other ways that we're building community, looking to increase community building. So, yep, I mentioned the city centre, we'll show you a picture of what we're proposing quickly because it's quite important, both from a city heart perspective, but also it also fits into giving people a reason to come into the CBD, which is actually in a pretty derelict state. And secondly, it's trying to resolve 160-year-old grievance from Manafenua. So what we're showing you is a picture of the heart of it, which will be the Civic Fari. This has all been co-designed with local, the local representatives of the local iwi and the architects, and creating a place that, you know, actually portrays the original intent of this piece of land when it was purchased by the Anglican Mission, when it was sold by local Maori to the Anglican Mission for the benefit of the community. So it's quite an important part of drawing the community together. In addition to that, I run a monthly commissioner clinic where anyone can come and talk about anything to me and they have half an hour and they're pretty well booked. We have them here in our council buildings, but we also go out to Papamaa and we hold another one at Greaton. And that's just a way to make sure that, you know, anyone can come and talk about the things that are important to them. And then lastly from me, and then I'll hand over to Stephen, but we found that there was, had been a lot of work undertaken over the past few years, working up to developing a city vision, again, to try and bring the city together with a common vision. So we picked that work up and just before Christmas, we ran a bit of a funky program called City Vibe to try and bring all of this work together and, and... Ah, those guys are so chilled out, it's fantastic. Grant says hello, came across him on the street.
Nice. You'll be the only one wearing a tie and shoes. Hey, 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 we're still live streaming and we have
I know.
some of our people here and we've got attendees and everything.
Modest banter Penny.
Modest.
Right, so we need to re- so Stephen's got to get away, so we'll make sure we kick off sharply.
Don't worry about the chat Brendan.
I- it's interesting, I can't read it. Gobbledygook.
I'll just have to open up the PowerPoint.
Kiora Brendan, we've got reinforcements.
Really? Fantastic.
Yeah. We're just getting, we've just got a couple of pictures to show you, well, sorry.
Righto, okay.
And now I've got the list that you sent through.
Yes, fantastic.
I sent through, so if we work with that.
Yes, and, and if that works around Stephen for him to chime in before he has to get away, then that's absolutely fine.
Yep.
So you can juggle around, so. Okay, so we've got everybody back on. Penny? Are we all good? One, two, three.
Yes, we are.
Yes, right. Show, we're in your hands then.
So just the, if it's under, I think it was Sue's question about some other ways that we're building community, looking to increase community building. So yeah, I mentioned the city centre, we'll show you a picture of what we're proposing quickly because it's quite important, both from a city heart perspective, but also, it also fits into giving people a reason to come into the CBD, which is, which is actually in a pretty derelict state. And secondly, it's trying to resolve 160 year old grievance from Manu Fenua. So what we're showing you is a picture of the heart of it, which will be the Civic Fari. This has all been co-designed with local, the local representatives of the local iwi and the architects and creating a place that, you know, actually portrays the original intent of this piece of land when it was purchased by the Anglican Mission, when it was sold by local Maori to the Anglican Mission for the benefit of the community. So it's, it's quite an important part of drawing the community together. In addition to that, I run a monthly commissioner clinic where anyone can come and talk about anything to me and they have half an hour and they're pretty well booked. We, we have them here in, in our council buildings, but we also go out to Papa Moa and we hold another one at Greaton. And that's just a way to make sure that then anyone can come and talk about the things that are important to them. And then lastly from me, and then I'll hand over to Stephen, but we, we found that there was, had been a lot of work undertaken over the past few years working up to developing a city vision, again, to try and bring the city together with a common vision. So we picked that work up and just before Christmas, we ran a, a bit of a funky programme called City Vibe to try and bring all of this work together and, and get from the community what was most important to them about Taonga going, going forward. We reached over two and a half thousand respondents and the good news was that almost two, I haven't got the exact figures in front of me, but almost two thirds of those were under fifty. You know, so and a large number of rangatahi took, took part in it. We use social media and we use different mechanisms to try and engage with the community in something that didn't look like council. And, and that's all part, we, we're just waiting till the annual plans finished before we and checking in with some of those original stakeholders to make sure we're on the right track before we finalise that. So I'll hand over to Stephen to talk about another couple of ways that we are doing that.
Thank you.
Thanks Anne. And look, I think I really want to start with the point that as commissioners coming in, we were very conscious of the need to clearly understand the issues right across the whole city. And our first mission was really the formation of a long-term plan. And we made a strategic decision that we would lead that debate or conversation with the community by having meetings right across the city with an extremely diverse range of groups. So we did visit many of the parts of the city that had organised groups like the residents and ratepayers association, including many of those that have been represented here today. But also more informal community areas where we went out and held pop-up meetings and drop-in meetings where anyone could come. And we were right across the city and doing that, all four commissioners together with staff. That is where we received so much of the feedback about, it's great to have the opportunity to talk to you. And we feel that we as a community have been let down in the past and our voice hasn't been heard. There was a very strong sentiment of that and you would have seen that come through in our message today. So those groups included retirement homes, residents and ratepayers association groups. As I said, the more informal pop-up and drop-in meetings. But there are also a range of organisations that we regularly work with in partnership. And they include organisations like Social Link, who are very much obviously linked into the social challenges and needs across the city, social housing, and there are several organisations particularly looking at the needs from social housing and affordable housing point of view. Enviro Hub from an environmental perspective. And obviously the business community. And we've been very conscious to make sure that we are not just talking to any one sector group, but in fact we are talking broadly across all sorts of different community, communities of interest, as well as the geographic base. Significantly in that, we made a decision that in our engagement with iwi, it wouldn't be iwi coming or hapu coming to the council for a formal meeting. But indeed, we as commissioners would go out to Marai on a bi-monthly meeting basis. And we've set up quite a comprehensive programme of work as a result of that, which we are you know, progressively working our way through. So hopefully that gives you a brief fairly thorough insight into the ways that we have reached out to the community and feel that we have both heard and listened to the issues that have been arisen. And of course, many of the submitters would not have been aware of those processes. And you can understand that they may not think that that is happening, but I can assure you that it is. Lastly, just before I go. So I think you asked a question about the proportion of rates versus other income. And roughly that's a sixty forty split, sixty percent rates and forty percent other income. And I think that's me, I'm, I will now tend to my apologies, but we do have backup, I've got two restaurant colleagues who will step into my, my seat and address some of the wider questions. Thanks.
Stephen, there was, there was, there was one other one for you, which was the
Bill will do that.
The casting vote.
Yep, we hadn't forgot that Brendan.
Okay, cool. Thank you Stephen.
Thanks Stephen. See you next week. Second question from Sue was around the use of the word efficient. So we did find it, yes. So we talked about, well, the act actually talks about efficient and effective representative of councils' work being efficient and effective. But I think what, what we were talking about was making sure that the council, so I think that in our, the reasons for our final proposal that Sue's referring to is about making sure that we manage ratepayers' interests and finances efficiently. So and I think we talked earlier about, you know, endless meetings, talking about detail when actually we should be at the governance level. So, so that's what we're talking about, doing it efficiently. But effectively on behalf of the community. And I think there was overwhelming support, just need to mention, there was overwhelming support in our consultation for a reduction in the number of councillors. That came through in that first round of consultation quite clearly. And the only point really is that whether there's ten or eleven or twelve councillors, actually the, the, the way that council operates doesn't make a hang of a lot of difference, sitting around the table, ten or eleven. You know, the numbers isn't important, as we said before, it's the quality of debate and the diversity of thinking and representation that's brought to the table. So the next question that you had was one of the appellants mentioned, the extension of our term. So, so, so we're in place until the October elections appointed by the minister. Part of our terms of reference was that we prepared an exit strategy. So what we did at the end of last year was put out our work plan and then the decision dates throughout that work plan and do a risk analysis on that of a return to democracy in October of this year versus having a bit longer to, to put some of that, to get some of that embedded. There were decisions like, we brought forward the construction of a an intersection on the expressway going east that would unlock a new town centre of approximately 10,000 jobs and four to five, three to four thousand homes, new homes. We brought that forward in the long-term plan, but we're waiting on Waikatoatahi to do some work around tolling. They won't be making that decision until next year. So, so it was, that, that's the example that we, of what we were looking at. And so in the end, we recommended in our fourth quarter report, which went to the minister at the end of last year and was made public because we put them all up so that the public can see them. That was made public about a month ago. The media have only just picked that up, but that, that was a proposal we, we, our exit strategy was she kept us on for another 12 months. Went to elections next year with a crown manager taking it through to 2025. Now, you know, the decision is entirely in the hands of the minister, but that was, that was our recommendation. And there is a lot of talk and uncertainty in the community and in this organisation actually, as a result of not knowing what's going to happen. But the next issue you raised was the ca- oh, sorry, did
No.
Oh, right. But I can't see the chat, but I haven't got the glasses on, so I can't see the chat. So Bill's going to address the casting vote?
Kiora, commissioners?
Oh, sorry, I should have introduced Bill Bosley, who's the third commissioner. And we also have Shad Rollaston in here as well. Just so you can identify them.
Now, I just noticed the chat that came up. So yes, I was the independent chair of the Smart Growth Partnership for twenty odd years until I became a city council commissioner in February of last year. So in terms of the, the casting vote, we'd certainly acknowledge and accept Greg Brownless's comment today, that councils are able to choose at the beginning of each triennium whether they whether or not to include a casting vote in their standing orders. So, so obviously every triennium, that's up for debate and resolution. And obviously, there's no guarantee that the council will continue in the future to have that provision that will depend on the council of the day. But I would add, if there's no casting vote provision, it makes it even more important that the role of the mayor or the chairperson is to avoid a situation where there is a standoff and no decision is able to be made. So it really, it does focus in terms of the, the role of the mayor and that person's ability to work through and work with the team hopefully overcome that potential standoff or a lack of decision being made on a particular issue.
Thanks Bill. So the next question was around how did the council engage with the community to establish communities of interest for the review? So I think that's quite important. A couple of the appellants made the comments that they, you know, we had eight hundred odd submissions in the first round, but they were ignored as we continued through. That's not true at all. We need to make the point, we took all of that into account. And, and plus, we had the input that we'd had through the long-term plan, extensive input, talking to thousands of people. Manu Fenua's input and particularly that from our four members of the Strategy Finance and Risk Committee from, from the Tarangapu or appointed by Tarangapu, plus, plus the observations of the review the review team that the minister appointed. So all of that was taken into account. And, and a number of the appellants have talked about the different ways that you can get communities of interest and that's absolutely right. Where in the end, what we had found around the city was that geographic that feeling from those communities that felt isolated, that tended to be more geographic than, than, than perhaps is reflected in some of the partnership groups that Stephen's talked to. That, you know, we went to Welcome Bay for instance and had a town hall meeting there. About forty-five to sixty people attending said to us, we feel like the forgotten suburb. We had a mayor come out here once and tell us we were the forgotten suburb and then he went away and forgot about us. So, so it was more a geographical feeling of isolation that we got from people that helped us with that initial look at providing in that first round an option that had that widespread geographical, more widespread geographical representation. They also need to make the point that in the second round of consultation the, it was fifty, it was almost fifty fifty in favour or against for what we were proposing on, on our initial proposal. But, but the fifty percent that were against were quite diverse in the options that they preferred. So it was quite heartening to see that, you know, close to fifty percent of those who responded supported that geographical ward-based representation. Just stop me, we'll just track on through. So if you want to stop me. You're on, you're on mute.
Yeah, keep, keep, keep going. There might be a couple of questions to clarify at the end, but then I think we'll be done. So, yeah.
Okay, yep. The next one is sort of around, I've lost, I've lost it now. Oh, yes, predominantly white male councillors in the past, older white male councillors. Look, we can get you information on previous councils, we haven't got that to hand. But what I can tell you, and I think it's pertinent to some of what you've heard today, that the last council had a similar diversity in age across both ward-elected councillors and at-large elected councillors. And in fact, the youngest councillor elected came from a ward. There's three women were elected, one was from at-large and two were from wards. So it didn't matter really whether they were ward-elected from wards or elected at-large. We got us, you know, we, we did get diversity within both. So that the argument you've heard today is that you won't get the diversity on a ward-based council. Well, that doesn't actually, that didn't actually work for the, for the last council. We've only ever had one woman mayor of this city, that was twenty years ago. There were four women in her council, four out of fourteen. And, and the numbers, so, so the three women on the last council was actually up there was with the best that they've ever ever had, even if that was twenty years ago. We can give you some stats on, I just want to show you because there was also a question that we'd made an assumption about someone being pakihar. Whereas in fact, the survey analysis that the staff did was based on the questions that, that that survey respondents answered. We've got a graph that shows you the, the geographical spread of what's happened to it. Coming, coming? Yeah, so that, that shows you the, the survey respondents and the geographical spread. So we did get, you know, quite widespread of, of participation. Albeit, you can see it's dominated by Papa Moa and Mount Manganui. And, and, and hence our comments that we, you know, you have to be careful. Every council struggles with this, you know that better than, than we do. So you do have to be careful about whose voices you're listening to. And I can tell you that the other, and we can provide this to you if you want it. But when you go into it a bit more, you see that ethnicity, sixty-nine percent were New Zealand European. And the age ranges were thirty-seven percent over sixty-five and another thirty percent over fifty. So eighty, eighty, almost, yeah, eighty percent over, over fifty. So hence, hence our comments. In fact, it brings me to community boards, if I can find my place. And look, we had great, we have great sympathy for Barry and he's made a very thoughtful presentation. And we've spent quite a bit of time with Barry talking through quite seriously with him, the, the issues that he raise, raises and the points that he raised. And, and, and we, we talked with him about the Thames Coramandal example that he gave and he brought in an ex-deputy mayor of Thames Coramandal to talk with us and Barry referred to that discussion. The, the difference with Thames Coramandal, and, and it's what you see mirrored in a way in Auckland, is that each one of those small communities has their own water system and sewage system. So you can easily delegate quite responsible functions to that community board. And my observations are have been that when a community board has serious delegations and plays a serious role in its community, it is extremely effective. And, and I, you know, as I said, my husband's been a part of a community board, I've always had a soft spot for well-functioning community boards working in their community. The difficulty we have, and we did try explaining, explaining that was first of all, we're proposing a ward system that gives quite close contact between the ward councillor and, and quite a small distinct area of, of Taonga for them to, to represent and work with. We, we, as commissioners, have put the organisation under enormous pressure to, to, to turn it into a delivery council, a council that delivers rather than plans. And you open up the cupboards and there's plans for Africa because they've done lots of planning, but very little delivery over the years for a whole variety of reasons, emanating largely from governance. So, so that, that we, we, we know that we have put this organisation under extreme pressure. And, and of course COVID and, and, and the distinct lack of and, and you'll know councillors that are really struggling to get planners and building inspectors and all, all of those really essential people. So, so we were very conscious of that and to establish community boards where we've never had them before is a big piece of work. And to do that in the, in a time of quite distinct uncertainty, both because we've got a commission in place, but also because of the reforms that are coming with Resource Management Act and the, the future of local government. We just felt at this stage, we were better to go with that wider representation of the wards and, and, and sort of see what happens in the future. So, you know, absolutely understand where Barry's come from and he's put a lot of work and a lot of thought into it. But we just couldn't, we just couldn't in the end go with something like that. And, and Glenn actually summed it up really well. There is a plethora of community groups here in, in Taonga. Probably that have sprung up, many of them because they felt their voice was lacking. And so we've tried to work with them as much as we possibly can and where they are missing, and he summed that up pretty well. We've done those pop-up meetings and the drop-in meetings and the town hall type meetings in order to try and, and make sure that that voice was heard. So, so I hope that So so I hope that, I hope that explains that, you know, we didn't, we didn't brush past um the community boards without some quite serious thought about whether that 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 was an at-large model might actually be um a a an answer for Taonga. Um and then I think we've got a slide for you on Glenn's model. So the final question was, you know, did we consider that 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 final um that 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 proposal from Glenn, uh the current arrangements or current wards at large with with an at-large? And yes, look, you know, we we had that as a as an option. It does meet the criteria. That's what we've had. But but I have to say, and I'm and I'm probably, I hope I'm not speaking out of tune, but that's the status quo, and a lot of the people that you heard from this morning prefer the status quo. But obviously, they've said that to you. They think it works. Most of them do not accept that uh there was any need for the minister to appoint a commission. Um underlying all of that is is, you know, a a desire to to get democracy back as quickly as possible, because actually um they didn't need the commission in the first place, a crown manager, a crown observer, or something like that could could have taken its place. And so so if you have a look at the review and observation teams' comments, um uh as I as I said in my presentation earlier, they they observed the council operating, they observed the interpersonal relationships. They observed the the leadership and and their comments were made. Uh and I know that some of them, I mean, I think Greg talked about unsubstantiated. That was their opinion, uh that went to the minister. And so, you know, we we don't make any comment on that. We we have no comment. We have no right to make any comment. But what we do know is there's still a number of people that do not believe that the commission was necessary and that the status quo was actually working. And each of them will have a different reason, a different way that they think it could have been resolved. So that's really, um I hope, answered all the questions that you posed.
Brilliant, Anne, thank you.
Through the, through the, through the um morning.
Okay, are we able to, right, um I can I just get one point really, really clear, and and it is relation to the casting vote? Because part of your argument in support of the final number of ten was that there was a casting vote. And now that that's been made crystal clear, that that casting vote is a decision of the council to have it or not, are you influenced at all around the number as a consequence of recognizing that the casting vote is flexible? I just, it just, it's a point of clarity that's important because it's been brought up and asked, I just need to.
Yep. I I think in fairness, we 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 knew, we we knew that it was um something that the council decides on.
Right.
Uh and 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 we've had that ourselves, where we've had even numbers, but made the decision to give the the chair the the casting vote. Uh I think the more important part for us was that the mayor has the mandate of being elected at large and therefore has a greater mandate than the ward councillors. And it's behoven on the mayor then to show leadership, to get consensus amongst the majority of councillors. A- as it is for mayors at any point, so that they don't have to rely on a casting vote. If the mayor has to rely on a casting vote on significant issues, there's there's still a serious problem within that council. Does that answer? You you're on mute. I think.
Long day.
That's the the term of the of the decade, isn't it?
Uh no, no, that's answered, and I'm and I'm and I'm comfortable. And it is the writer reply. We're not supposed to delve into questions, so I I broke the rules a little bit, but I just felt it was an important point to get clarity on. So um we are, we're done. Um we've done really, really well. And so now is just that opportunity where we um recognize the day.
Just one thing, Brendan. Can we just say yes to the um the analysis of the returnees of the survey? Yes, please?
Yes, I ca- I ca- I I got that. I know EJ picked that up as well. Yeah, yeah. Um so look, first of all, uh can I just say, and thanks for the for the leadership and getting us um through today, and thanks to the team behind um that have offered support. I especially want to acknowledge Marty, who's managed to stay hidden all day. But the administration behind preparing for this piece of work is huge. And uh I really want to make that acknowledgement uh to him, as we have with all CEOs, as we've gone through this through this process. To the teams that work with our team to set up the day, it doesn't happen in five minutes. Using this digital technology is quite challenging, uh but I think you'll agree, um it's work we've gotten through today. And I think, you know, to be frank, we've given everybody a fair go. Uh and that's really what, you know, it's really important that that we do.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um I want to acknowledge, as we did at the start, that this is a very different something's rattling. Uh it's a very different environment uh between us. Um it's special, unique, and it has its, it has its challenges around it. So here we are, the commission. We now have to go away and consider what's being proposed, respecting the processes that you've had to go through um as well and 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 who you have to report back to. So it is different. Um but I'm sure we'll, I'm sure we'll get to a point uh which is respectful and recognizes the principles of democracy, which are just um so, so important. Um so I think that covers off the thanks and acknowledgements, and it's intriguing to note that the screen is now frozen uh at the Taonga City Council. So I think, you know, pretty much during the course of the day, everybody's had a fair go at freezing.
They've run out of gas.
Um and I don't think we're going to panic about trying to get reconnected. I'm sure you can hear us anyway. Uh and so with those few words of conclusion, I'm just going to call on uh Benita to close us uh with our karakia.
Kia ora, Mr. Chair. Tina anu tato kato uh inu hua ana ki Taonga moana, noiti mahiki o kato me nga nga whanau whanui o te ra hapu re o te ra rohe. Tena kato, tena kato, tena kato, katoa. Um our closing karakia, which is also in our paperwork, is unu hia. So feel free to join. Unu hia, unu hia. Unu hia i te uru tapu nui, kia watea, kia mama, te ngako, te tenana, te wairua i te arataka tu. Koiara e rongo, kokaeria ake kironga, kia watea, kia watea, aida, kua watea, ho, pai mariri. And that karakia whanau just talks to releasing us uh from the work of the day, that we free our bodies, minds and spirits as we move into the next phase of our day, and that we go forth uh with a good heart and good mind and goodwill to all of us. Kia ora tato katoa.
Kia ora, Benita, and thank you.